Good evening. I am Dr. Jaime Rodriguez, Vice President of the Wesaco ISD Board of Trustees. This public hearing is being conducted pursuant to the Open Meetings Act. Notice of this meeting has been posted online for at least 72 hours. The board is meeting by the use of Google Meets and telephone transmission, which allows two-way communication for members of the public during public comments. A recording of this meeting is being made and will be available to the public at a later date. The time is now 5:25 PM, and I call this meeting to order. I will now begin roll call. As I call your name, please respond. Mr. Isidoro Nieto?
Present.
This is Jackie Susitah.
Present.
Coach Jess Davidio?
Present.
And Mr. Andrew Gonzalez?
Present.
Let the record show that a quorum of board members are in attendance. And we move on to item three, Public Hearing on the Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas. Indicators, Dr. Rodriguez?
Good afternoon, Vice President, Dr. Rodriguez, trustees, members of the audience. This afternoon, we host our Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas Public Hearing. This is an annual presentation, public hearing, that has to be conducted. I do want to commend the team. The school district has received a superior achievement rating, and we do have our Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance, Mr. Andres Sanchez, who will lead us in the presentation. Mr. Sanchez, you may proceed.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez, members of the board. This is the public hearing, and Dr. Valdez mentioned on the first indicators, which stand for Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas. And this is done every year. This public hearing is based on data that has been audited, so the latest audits submitted to TAs for the fiscal year 2019, 2020, which is last year. On page three of the presentation, there's some information about the rating and for the benefit of our new board trustees. I'm gonna run through them. I'll make it fast, but some highlights on it. Now, the primary goal at first is to achieve improved performance in the management of school districts, and TA requires a public hearing. TA ranks school district in four rating categories, superior, above standard, mid-standard, and substandard achievement. School First is a financial accountability rating system that holds school districts accountable for the quality of the financial management practices. School First is designed to encourage Texas public schools to manage their financial resources better in order to provide the maximum allocation possible for direct instructional purposes. School First is a tool that creates transparency and discloses the quality of local management and decision-making processes that the school district uses concerning the financial resources the school district receives. A financial accountability rating system should include processes for anticipating the future financial solvency of each school district and open a Robyn Charlie School. It could include an analysis of revenues and expenditures, which we're not presenting at this time, because we present those every month. The first indicators, the ratings. Wesaco ID has received a superior achievement rating, which is the highest, for the past 18 years since the inception of the program, which started in the year 2001, 2002. There are critical indicators I mentioned before, financial for solvency and financial for competence indicators. For, I want to mention the current year. We need to mention both years. We go to the details of the last year, but we had to mention the prior year whether we met the indicators or not. So I'm gonna go over the 1920 item. For the critical indicators, I indicated one, two, three, and four. For financial solvency indicators, we have indicators six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14. Of those eight, six, 10, and 12 are new indicators. And on the financial competence indicators, we have 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, and 20. And of those six, 15, 19, and 20 are also new indicators. Wesaco ID obtained a superior achievement rating with a perfect score of 100 points out of a maximum 100 points for fiscal years 2015 through 16, 2015, 16 through 2018, 19, the last four years prior to this one. For 1920, we did not get the perfect score, and I'll explain why. The first indicators rating is one of two report cards the school district receives in finance. The other report card is the annual financial report. This public hearing was advertised in the monitor on Friday, September 17, as required. Skip the next slide, please. Go to five, six. There, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna go with the first indicator, and I have to read the question so you know what it is. Will they complete annual financial report, also known as AFR, and data submitted to the TA within 30 days of the November 27 or January 28 deadline, depending on the district's school fiscal year end date, of June 30 or August 31, respectively? And the answer is yes. The 1920 audit report was filed in time on February 25, 2021. You remember, because of the delay that we had, hacking of our system, we couldn't provide information to our auditors. So that delayed the presentation in January, so we had to go late to present it in February. So we did meet the indicator 1920, and we also met the 1819. Indicator two, was there an unmodified opinion in the annual financial report on the financial statements as a whole? The external independent auditor determined if there was an unmodified opinion or not. Unmodified opinion means a clean audit, that there were no findings of anything. And we did have such an opinion, so we met the indicator, and so did the prior year. Indicator three, was the school district in compliance with the payment terms of all debt agreements at fiscal year end? That means any debt that we have. So yes, we did meet them. We were up to date with everything that we needed to pay. And we did the year before, so we met the indicator both years. And there are no disclosures in the audit financial report of any default of the district. Indicator four, did the school district make timely payments to the teacher retirement system, the TRS, the Texas Wolford Commission, the Internal Revenue Service, or any other governmental agencies? And the answer is yes. The district made timely payments to the TRS, TWC, IRS, and other governmental agencies. So we got met the indicator 1920 and 1819 as well. Indicator five was not rated for either year. Next page, please. Indicator six, which is a new one. Was the average change in assigning unassigned fund balance over three years less than a 25% decrease, or did the current years' assigned and unassigned fund balance exceed 75 days of operations expenditures? Wesaco ID's average change in fund balance was 0.85%. So we needed to have less than 25%. It was less than 1%, so we met the indicator. The prior year, we didn't have it, so not applicable. Indicator seven, was the number of days of cash on hand in current investments in the general fund for the school district sufficient to cover operating expenditures, excluding facilities acquisitions and construction? The number of days of cash in hand needed to obtain 10 points is 90 days or more? Wesaco ID had enough cash in hand for 113 days. So we met the indicator, and we did the year before. Indicator eight, was the measure of current assets to current liabilities ratio for the school district sufficient to cover short-term debt? Wesaco ID's measure was 3.71 times. It needed to be three times to obtain all 10 points. So since we have 3.71, which is higher, we met the indicator, and we did the year before. Indicator nine, did the school district general fund revenues equal or exceed expenditures excluding facilities acquisition and construction? If not, was the school district number of days of cash on hand greater than or equal to 60 days? So the general fund revenue exceeded the expenditures by 5,372,000. So we met the indicator, and we also did it the year before. Indicator 10, which is also a new one, says, did the school district average less than a 10% variance, which means from 90% to 110% when comparing the budget revenues to the actual revenues for the last three fiscal years? Wesaco's ID's measure was 0.5%. It needed to be less than 10% to obtain the 10 points. So we didn't have that much of a difference comparing the total revenues. So we did pass the indicator. Last year, we didn't have it, so it's not applicable. Next page. All right, thank you. Indicator 11, was the ratio of long-term liabilities to total assets for the school district sufficient to support long-term solvency? Also, if the school district's change of students and membership over five years was 7% or more, then the school district passes the indicator. They give us two options to try to pass the indicator. The ratio to obtain the 10 points is less than or equal to 0.6. The district's ratio is 0.32, 0.3198. So we did meet the indicator, and we did the year before. Indicator 12, which is also new, says, was the debt per $100 of assessed property value ratio sufficient to support future debt repayments? Wesaco ID's ratio is 1.46. The ratio needed to be less than 4% to obtain the 10 points. So it is less than 4%, so we met the indicator. Last year, we didn't have it. Indicator 13, was the school district's administrative cost ratio equal to or less than the threshold ratio? The ratio needed to obtain 10 points is less than or equal to 8.55%. Wesaco ID's ratio is 6.88. So we met the indicator, and we did it the year before as well. Indicator 14, did the school district not have a 15% decline in the students-to-staff ratio over three years? Total enrollment to total staff? If the student enrollment did not decrease, the school district will automatically pass the indicator. Wesaco ID declined in the students-to-staff ratio over three years was only minus 2.81%. So it was way below. So we did pass the indicator, and we did pass it the year before. Indicator 15, which is also new. Were the school districts ADA within the allotted range of the district by annual pupil projections submitted to TA? If the district did not submit pupil projections to TA, did it certify TA projections? The range to obtain five points is less than or equal to 0.07. Wesaco ID's range is 0.015, which is almost 1/5 of it. So we passed the indicator, and the prior year was not, there were no indicators, so it's not applicable. Next page. Indicator 16, did the comparison of Public Education Information Management System, also known as PIMS, data to like information in the school district's audited financial report result in a total variance of less than 3% of all expenditures by function? Wesaco's ID variance was only 0.00009%. The variance was only 153 out of 100, almost 170 million records. So we passed definitely, and we passed it the year before. Indicator 17, did the external independent auditor report that the audit financial report was free of any instances of material weaknesses in internal controls over financial reporting and compliance for local, state, or federal funds? Material weaknesses in internal controls were reported. Were they reported? The answer is no. No, they were not reported by the auditors. So we did pass the indicator, and we passed it the year before. The year before, the indicator was number 2B. That's why we have the indication there. But now it became 17, they call it separately. Indicator 18, this is the important one to mention. Did the external independent auditor indicate that the audit financial report was free of any instances of material noncompliance for grants, contracts, or laws related to local, state, or federal funds? There were instances of material noncompliance for grants, contracts, and laws related to local, state, or federal funds mentioned in the audit report. As you all remember, there was a finding the auditors presented that we missed payroll and 21st century grant. It was a $300 error that we had, because we used data for March, for the March payroll instead of the other one. So we were in the pandemic, that we allowed the secretary to come quickly to run it and go. And she did it fast, and we didn't catch it if we ran it. It was discussed with the board in the presentation. And because of that finding that the auditor mentioned, we did not get that indicator. So because of that zero, we got a 90, which is still superior, but we did not get a perfect score. Indicator 19, also a new indicator. Did the school district post the required financial information on its website in accordance with government code, local code, Texas Education Code, Texas Administrative Code, and other statutes, laws, and rules that were in effect at the school district's fiscal year end? Wesaco ID posted all required financial information in accordance with the various codes. So we did meet the indicator, and last year, it didn't exist or is not applicable. And the last indicator, number 20, which is also a new one. Did the school board members discuss district property values at a board meeting within 120 days before the district adopted its budget? So Wesaco ID's school board did discuss the district property values before the district adopted the budget. I had mentioned it to the board during the public hearing for the budget, and I believe the last workshop. But there was gonna be some changes on the property values when the law said that the values kept going up. We're gonna have to be making changes on the tax rate, and we're gonna be switching to values of the same year as opposed to values of the prior year. But we did mention it, and that's what TA wanted for a school district to do. So since we did mention that to the board, the board discussed it, we passed the indicator. That is the last indicator. Before I continue, do you all have any questions? So comment.
Mr. Sanchez, I did look at this before I came. I saw that number 18, we had gotten a zero. And of course, we're a very data-driven district, so I was clicking on other districts to see what their scores were, or if they had also not passed number 18. And comparable districts to us, our size, like, for example, La Jolla, 98, PSGA, 98, Sherilyn, 98, Mission, 100. So if we would have gotten this one, that's 10 points, but we had been at 100?
Yes, ma'am.
Aw, man.
Oh, yeah, it was hard to find it on the audit, and then this one as well.
Okay. Yeah, I noticed that everybody else had passed this one, and I was concerned because it says "noncompliance", so it's a payroll issue.
Yeah, that item, it was compliant with the grant. Not a payroll issue, was when we processed it, we cut the prior month. So there was a $300 difference. We spoke to the employees, and we recovered the overpayment amount, and we took care of it. But the orders were, we found it, we cannot let it go, especially because it's a grant.
Was this indicator passed, did it pass last year also? Or was it the same?
Every single year.
Every year? I mean, just the number 18, though?
Yes. That one, I didn't, had never been a problem.
Okay.
That one, again, because of the pandemic. The secretary came in, was rushed to come in real quick to do it and send it. And we were also rushed to get out of the office, and we didn't catch it.
Okay.
Okay, I'll continue.
Mr. Sanchez, what was indicator five before? What is it?
I don't remember. It'd been natural for two, three years already.
Okay. It hasn't been on there.
Okay. Next slide, please. Page 10. Thank you. Superintendent's contract. We're supposed to either provide it at the public hearing meeting or make it available online. The superintendent's contract has always been posted on the website. It's been there for, superintendent's passed. So it is posted, including Dr. Valdez's contract is also posted on the website. It is in the Financial Transparency Section at the bottom. Next slide. This is a slide of the presentation that shows travel expenditures of the superintendent and board trustees for fiscal year 2019, 2020. This is for trips they took for the district. And I'm gonna go read him, unless you want me to. I'll just mention the totals, not the detail. Superintendent, 4,706. Mr. Isidoro Nieto, $55. Dr. Richard Rivera, $1,185. Mr. Andrew Gonzalez, $27. Board President, Amanda Cuellar, $54. Mr. Patrick Kennedy, former trustee, $1,432. Mr. Erasmo Lopez, former trustee, $1,815. And Dr. Jaime Rodriguez, $27. Now, because of the pandemic, some of the meetings they usually attend, they didn't. So that's what the early meetings, the one, the board trustee that went to a couple of the early conferences have expenditures to show. Do you have any questions on that? Next slide. The next item we need to report is outside compensation received by the superintendent. Dr. Pacila Canales did not receive any outside compensation from anyone. Next slide. Slide 13, reports, if any. If there are any gifts received by the superintendent and board members for gifts received in excess of $100 by superintendent and board members and first-degree relatives, if any, for fiscal year 2019, 2020? Nobody reported any such gifts received. The next slide, 14, which is the last one. Is business transaction between Wesaco ID and board members for fiscal year 2019, 2020? We don't have any transactions to report for any of the board members either. That is the end of the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. I'll move on to item four, Public Comments on the Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas Indicators Report. And I believe, since this is a public hearing, it's open to all, even members of the audience also. I'll go ahead and move on to item five. And again, thank you, Mr. Sanchez.
Welcome.
Adjustment? And it is now 5:46. And I just want to let the record reflect that Mr. De Los Santos arrived at 5:26 for the public hearing. So I'll go ahead and move on to workshop. Everybody good moving on workshop? Good evening. I am Dr. Jaime Rodriguez, Vice President of the Wesaco ISD Board of Trustees. This board workshop is being conducted in compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Notice of this meeting has been posted online for at least 72 hours. The board is meeting by the use of Google Meets and telephone transmission, which allows two-way communication for members of the public during public comments. A recording of this meeting is being made and will be available to the public at a later date. The time is now 5:47 PM, and I call this meeting to order. I will now begin roll call with Mr. Nieto?
Present.
Mrs. Susitah?
Present.
Coach Davidio?
Present.
Mr. De Los Santos?
Present.
And Mr. Gonzalez?
Present.
Let the record show that a quorum of board members are in attendance, although a quorum is not required for board workshops. And we will move on to item three, Public Comments, for this workshop. And item four, Presentation by Architect Firms. Dr. Rodriguez?
Vice President, Dr. Rodriguez, trustees, and members of the audience. For future district projects that require these services, we do have architect firms present. They'll be conducting a presentation to the board and to the audience this afternoon. I will now turn it over to Mr. Andres Sanchez, our Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Business. And I charge him now with leading the presentations and getting the firms in. Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. You may proceed.
The first firm to present is Able City, LLC. Let me check on it.
We are here virtually. I don't know if he stepped out to check the lobby.
Okay, he's virtual, Mr. Sanchez.
Yeah.
So...
Let me know whenever you're ready, and we'll get started.
Mr. Sanchez, do you want to give instructions, or you want me to give the instructions? Are we doing?
Well, yeah. The company will have five minutes to present, and then five minutes for the board to ask them questions and answer questions on anything the board asks related to the presentation.
Thank you.
And if anybody else is online that needs to present later on, we'll ask for them to please log off the system so that they're not listening for our courtesy when the other companies are presenting.
How many are virtual, Mr. Sanchez? How many firms are virtual?
I need to check with Valdez if anything changed. But I'll go check on it while his company presents.
So five minutes, presentation, and five minutes, questions?
Yes.
Richard, Davidio, will you go in key time?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, make sure Valdez gets him off wherever he was on.
Yeah. So we're just, just to clarify, make sure if you're not the one presenting and you're virtual, please log off at this time. And so you may begin. We'll go ahead and start the clocks as soon as you start presenting.
Awesome. Thank you very much for having us, and we appreciate the opportunity to share our qualifications with you. My name is Aaron Hanley. I am the principal in charge of Able City's Valley Office in Mission, Texas. I would be your day-to-day point of contact, as well as manage any potential task orders that may come out of this contract. Joining me tonight is Mario Peña, one of our founding partners. He is really responsible for fostering the development of our K-12 practice. So I'm gonna let him do most of the speaking. He's gonna share Able City's mission, as well as what makes us a little bit different than some other architecture firms, as well as share our experience and qualifications related to K-12 facilities. So with that, I will hand it over to Mario.
Thank you, Aaron, and thank you, board, for letting us present here tonight. We're honored to be considered. So just a little bit about Able City. You all may not be familiar with us. You know, we take pride, and we've done a lot of work to provide an integrated approach to what we call city-making, which is making great cities, hence the name Able City. It includes architecture, planning, economic development, and community engagement. Our areas of expertise and specialization include those elements because we think those elements make communities great communities to live in. Education is obviously a critical one. But so are the rest. And so including all the perspectives and conversations brings essential value and longevity to the investments you'll eventually make as school districts. And, you know, keeping that public funds, you know, being very responsible with that investment and making it sustainable is a key to why we've built out the firm the way we've done. We've done this in lots of places. We grew out of Laredo, starting there in the late '70s. We now have offices in San Antonio and, obviously, Laredo and in Mission, Aaron being there. Aaron's not there tonight because he's on a field trip for work. Otherwise, he would be there presenting. So like I said, we've done this across the state. But particularly, we're familiar with doing this in border communities. That's where our roots are. Our projects are peppered all along the South Texas border. We know how to communicate especially well there with the contracting environment, which is critical to, you know, fulfilling all the responsibilities that come with designing and building great schools in South Texas. These are some recent learning environment projects. As you can tell, we have many clients, many in Laredo, some along the 35 corridor. And they vary from learning centers, expansions of restrooms, all the way up to whole high schools. And we're, and we'll be... Um, and, and we're, and we'll be, we, a few years ago, we began our work in, in, uh, in the higher education realm as well. Um, and, and so that's all great experience that we bring to the table, um, e- even in the K through twelve field. To recap, you know, we've got over a hundred and twenty educational facilities under our belt. Uh, we've been doing this for forty years. Even though we're generalists as architects, uh, you know, seventy percent of our firm experience is education. So we are education experts. Um, we have six registered architects on our team, uh, of about twenty-five people. And, and over the years, we've built over one billion dollars of construction value, uh, in K through twelve.
Sir, you have one minute?
Thank you. Okay, so just want to, um, reinforce that we are, uh, we've got a history of being on budget, being on time. Uh, we know how critically important that is, uh, to make sure schools are open in August and to assure quality as we do this. And again, bringing innovation through all our planning and economic development experience makes us ask key questions when we, when we talk to you all. One, to make sure that, um, you're working with other agencies, um, like the city, uh, of Westaco and, and, and the regional, you know, partnerships you can build, you know, it's important. Uh, you know, we're asking, are you aligned with the comprehensive plan of the city and the region? Are you, are you aligning, are, is our school reinforcing your alignment with, uh, the regions' target industries, for example? So, um, you know, having conversations that are not in a value, um, i- is, is important to our process.
Thank you, Mister Peña.
Thank you, yeah. We'll open it up for questions.
We're going to open it up for questions now. Uh, we'll start with, uh, Mister Nieto.
Mister Ham, uh, or Mister Peña?
Yes, sir.
What was the latest project that you worked on?
Well, me personally, um, I finished up an elementary school in Laredo, uh, called Zachary Elementary School. It was about an eight-hundred, uh, student elementary school. That's one that I led myself as principal. Most recently, I am providing, uh, design support for Cigarroa High School, also in Laredo. That's ongoing. We're on phase two of a, of about a, what is it, a two-hundred-thousand square foot high school. And so that's ongoing. Phase one's complete and we're moving on to phase two.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Sutaita?
Good afternoon, Mister Peña. Uh, I see here there's a question that was asked, says, have you worked with school districts in the R G V? You guys answered no. Have you ever, uh, sent an R F Q to any of the districts in the valley or even to Westaco? Or is this the first time that you'd send an R F Q in?
This is not the first time we send an R F Q in. Um, Aaron is in charge of, of, of that specifically. So he probably remembers it a little better than I do how many we've, we've submitted. And, and I can't remember whether Westaco has been one of them. So Aaron, help me out with this one.
This, this would be the first time we've submitted to Westaco I S D. We did recently submit to Rio Grande City I S D, Edinburgh I S D and McAllen I S D. Uh, I don't believe we've heard back the results of McAllen and Edinburgh. Uh, we finished third in the Rio Grande City, uh, which was about a month ago.
Okay, thank you.
Trevino? No, it's been answered. Thank you, Mister Peña. Mister De Los Santos?
My questions were answered.
Gonzalez?
Same way, Miss Jackie just passed it.
Thank you very much. That's going to be for the, for the questions, uh, Mister Peña, Mister Hanley. Appreciate your presentation.
Appreciate it.
Thanks so much for having us.
Thank you. We want to move, we'll move on to Alvarado Architects and Associates. There you go, Mr. Sanchez. So we're going to give you five minutes for the presentation, and then we're going to have five minutes of questions, uh, from the board, okay?
Can I remove, can I remove my mask?
Yes, sir.
Just so we can be more clear?
Yes, sir. And, uh, Mister Trevino will be keeping time, okay? So we'll start the clock as soon as you start presenting.
Okay. Well, good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Valdez. My name is Eli Alvarado, Vice President of Alvarado Architects and Associates. With me today, I have my father, Erasmo Alvarado Junior, President of Alvarado Architects and Associates. And we're here this evening to present our qualifications, uh, to the Westaco Independent School District. A quick introduction, uh, who is Alvarado Architects? We were established in nineteen ninety-one. We have over thirty years of dedicated, uh, experience to educational facilities. We feel that our work ethic and our client service extinguishes us from our competitors. Uh, we are hub, we are minority business, we are S B A certified. We are members of the Texas Association of Rural Schools, small districts. Uh, we are local, Mid Valley local, as a matter of fact. We're out of Donna, so we are five minutes away. Depends on if I get all the green lights. I can probably get here a little bit quicker, but we're just down the street. And we're very familiar with, uh, Westaco I S D, as well as the city, uh, working together, uh, for permitting and anything that needs to happen. Currently finishing a couple of projects with the city, and we've got, um, over twenty, twenty-five years' experience working here with Westaco I S D. In fact, my father was, uh, Architect of Record, uh, from two thousand and five to two thousand and ten here for the Westaco Independent School District. And so we've got a couple of projects which we'll show you. Uh, I will be the client executive for the project. I will handle the day-to-day operation, operations, um, be involved a hundred percent on the projects from the contract negotiations all the way to the warranty phase and closing out the project. Uh, just, just a couple of local clients here, um, that we work with, a lot of repeat clients. Our approach, uh, the first thing we want to do is get a better understanding of the projects that we'll be working on. We want to establish a program, um, and a, and a schedule of services to make sure that we meet the deadlines that the school district has for us. Uh, we're going to review all the guidelines. We'll be holding, uh, meetings with the contractor every two weeks. At every Friday, at the end of every Friday, we provide the board or administration, um, a Friday report. So that way, if anyone has any questions, we can in turn return it over to the school board, uh, and y'all are updated on a weekly basis. Um, and then as needed, monthly, uh, presentations to the board. Once we're selected to do a project, we want to use low maintenance materials, something that's going to be durable, something that's going to last. We want to balance our budget, uh, with the costs. So we're always looking at that from the design phases all the way, uh, through the construction. We're looking at sustainability, energy efficient materials, and looking at, uh, technology and security, uh, to keep the students safe. Our quality assurance, uh, like I say, our name is on our, our company, uh, so we're giving you that quality assurance. We're going to make sure that we're going to be transparent, uh, presenting to the board. We're going to be transparent with the contractors. And we have a, be onsite, um, on a weekly basis, if not twice a week, uh, to make sure that everything's going well. Relevant experience, uh, these are just a couple of elementary school projects that we've worked on, San Houston Elementary, uh, throughout the valley. Uh, we have middle school projects, uh, Cuellar Middle School, uh, additions and demolitions. We worked on that project here. Uh, re-roofing, we did actually re-roofing at four, uh, four schools here at, uh, Westaco, uh, including the high school. We, uh, we replaced the seats at the Suprulula Gym. Uh, renovation projects, uh, we just completed, uh, the pavilions and the restroom building at, uh, Mary Hope Cuellar and, um, Central Middle School. Uh, we've done remediation projects, um, asbestos removal, uh, mold remediation as well, renovation projects. Uh, high school projects, H VAC replacements, lighting replacements, uh, energies, make sure we're, um, meeting energy codes, uh, lowering your energy bills. A lot of the E S R funds is going to be tied into some of these projects as well.
Sir, you have one minute?
Uh, sports projects, currently designing baseball fields, softball fields and a track for the San Palita Independent School District, as well as a transportation building. We just completed the Taft Independent School District Track and Turf Project, and we completed the Tom Landry Stadium, Hall of Fame Stadium for Mission. Vocational projects include, uh, Donna North, uh, Mission Veterans Memorial, Career Technology and Cosmetology and Welding Shops. And with that, I will conclude that, uh, is our list of projects that we, um, that I'm using as relevant experience. And just touching base on the, a little bit on the E S R fund, because I know that that, um, is something that we look, that we look to as we're meeting with school districts. We assist the school districts in getting the first round of identifying all your equipment on, and on each campus, on each building. Uh, we'll go through that year make model, pretty much, how long it's been in operation.
Thank you, thank you, Mister Love. Thank you. We'll go ahead and open it up for questions, uh, Mister Nieto?
Oh, he answered the questions, um, in his presentation.
So, Mrs. Sutaita?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Mister Trevino?
I just, I think you touched base a little bit in, in one of your, one of the statements that you made.
Yes, sir.
But, uh, what do you do to keep the project going in order so that we don't run into additional cost, additional changeovers, additional? What do you guys do, or how successful have you been, or do you implement a program or something to make sure that, that, uh, we stay within the budget?
Yes, sir.
Or even save money?
Okay, um, I will say that, um, if not all the projects that we've worked here for the district Westaco I S D, we've actually returned money. So it's a, a change order back to the school district. The last one I'll use as a project was the pavilions at Mary Hope and at, uh, Cuellar Middle School, and then the restroom building. We were actually, um, ten percent lower from our budget than what the actual construction cost came in. So what we do is, we look at costs throughout the valley, uh, for the different projects that we're working on. Uh, we keep a library, so we understand what the local costs are. And now with COVID, we've seen the increase, uh, in prices. So we're trying to adjust some of those costs to get back to what, uh, to date's prices are. So we create that library and we use that, um, during the design development phase, the, the schematic design phase and into the construction documents phase. So after each one of those phases, uh, we'll come back to the, present to the board with a budget or an estimated cost. And although we're not the contractors, we reach out to them to try to get some of those costs. Uh, we build in contingencies as part of the project, just to make sure that we're not overrunning, um, on any cost, any hidden costs that are identified within a project. And then during construction, like I said, we meet on a weekly basis, um, with the contractor. We go over his schedule, we go over the budgets to make sure that everything is line. And then if something needs to come back to the board, then at that time we'll present it. And usually it's only stuff that's going to be added to the project. That's what the contingency is there. Just be set in place.
Okay, thank you. Mister De Los Santos?
No questions.
Mister Gonzalez?
No.
All right, so, thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. And Mister Sanchez, I have Amtech Solutions, next.
All right, sir, we're Amtechs.
Let me just, uh, just real quick, it's going to be a five-minute, uh, timeline presentation. Mister Trevino will be keeping, uh, time. And then, uh, uh, we'll have five minutes for questions from the board, okay? And we'll start the clock as soon as you start presenting.
No problem. Thank you for the opportunity. We're Amtech Solutions. My name is James.
Rick.
And Scott.
This is going to be an overview real quick, our key team members, um, overview of who Amtech Solutions is, what makes us unique, a few project spotlights in conclusion. Key team, key team members are, um, registered architects and engineers, project managers. So Amtech Solutions was founded in eighty-two in Dallas. We have eight locations, thirty employees. And we do a lot of work with small and large public entities such as school districts, universities, colleges, city, county and state entities. So building envelope consulting is what we specialize in. What is that? That's roofs, walls, windows, doors, anything that's waterproofing. We do full scope services such as design, bidding services, C A, construction admin. We also do testing. So, uh, thermal infrared testing, wind uplift testing, water testing, anything to help us determine any deficiencies in the building envelope. So our unique approach that we use is we spend a lot of time in the assessment. We do moisture scans, document reviews, site measurements and destructive testing to determine all sorts of existing conditions that are in a building, so we can best determine the scope of work. And we use proven design philosophies for waterproofing to solve unique project conditions, because we believe every project is unique. And we provide unique details for the contractors. We believe in open communication throughout the construction bidding phase with the owner, contractor, consultants and manufacturers. So our unique approach allows us to do several things. That's a benefit for you guys. We know about problems before construction starts. It allows us to get competitive bids and no change orders and projects completed on time. This is a project spotlight thermal assessment where we can use the thermal imaging to document leaks. This is a wind uplift physicist testing where we simulate high wind events for roofs. Water intrusion testing where we can find leaks, uh, exactly when and how water is getting in. This is electronic leak detection where we use, uh, low voltage current to find pinholes in systems that you cannot see with your eye. And all of these testings and assessments, um, we include preliminary repair, design solutions and budgets. For full scope projects, this is a roof replacement at Roma High School that we did. This project is a roof replacement with structural repairs and also exterior repairs at the library in Edinburgh. This is a project for Texas Southwest College in Brownsville for roof replacement and repairs. That was dependent on a budget that we had to mix replacement and repairs on the need of the college. This is a roof replacement that was also done for Brownsville I S D. It was a quick turnaround due to grants. And we had to also interface with another mechanical project that was ongoing at the same time. And all these projects were completed, uh, either on schedule or ahead of schedule with no change orders. And this is the last building I will prepare. This was, uh, waterproofing solutions in the precast concrete panels. So in conclusion, Amtech, we have licensed and experienced architects, engineers, building envelope consultants, and we utilize. One minute, okay, yeah. We utilize testing assessment tools to identify all the existing conditions that we can in order to design the best solution that brings in competitive bids and zero change orders. And we use proven waterproofing philosophies to solve all unique conditions of buildings, since all buildings are different. And that's the presentation.
Thank you, thank you for that. We'll go ahead and open it up for questions, Mister Nieto?
You mentioned that, uh, I guess here Roma High School is what, is that one of your latest projects on roofing?
Uh, Roma High School was completed in roofing around two thousand and eighteen.
And how satisfied were, with that particular roof that you placed there?
Uh, that particular roof actually won an award in the R C I, which is a Roof Consulting Institute.
Okay.
Um, so they're very, uh, pleased on that, and we did standing seam roof system design. And we custom designed a roof-to-wall transition, um, there that they had been having constant leaks in that area.
Thank you.
Mrs. Sutaita?
Hi, I'm reading your booklet that you gave. It was very informative. Thank you. I see here that you have a preventative maintenance program, which really stands out to me, because as Mister Nieto mentioned, we have some roof problems in our district. because as Mr. Gito mentioned, we have some roof problems in our district. And I see here that it says you guys will, obviously marginalizing the need of costly repairs or replacement, you have a maintenance program. Do most other architects also have this maintenance program? Is that something that's special to you guys that you could help us with?
Sure, that's more specialized for building envelope enclosure consultants with roofs and maintenance programs, waterproofing. So essentially, we find a lot of school districts, the maintenance is lacking because no one goes up to look at the roofs unless there's a problem specifically. And you also have a lot of mechanical units on the roof. And so mechanical contractors sometimes drop things, damage the roof without knowing it. And so our, our program where we go out essentially either once a year or twice a year, we just provide a punch list of maintenance items for the district that they can then use their own staff to solve.
Very good, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. LeVino?
Sir, I, my question is, it was really answered through your report. As far as, my question is, what do you guys do to stay within budget, to stay within completion of the days? And you guys obviously exceed that in a great way, so, you know, I commend you guys for that. What do you guys do different that you're able to do that? And also avoid having any change orders?
Yeah, so what we believe leads to that really is all the front-end work that we do when we do a design project. We do fieldwork, we bring teams in internally that do dimensions and measurements where we identify every penetration on a roof system. And we take height measurements so we know what flashing heights are going to be required. And then we also take pool tests, and so that's tests of structural integrity of decking systems and, and like metal and, and concrete. So we know if there's going to be an issue ahead of time. We also do thermal scans, so we know if there's already moisture in the system. So do we everything that we can to identify issues that usually come up in construction.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. De Los Santos?
No questions.
And Mr. Wanzas?
No, fine, thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you, good evening.
And next up is ERO.
Can you go full speed through?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How do I change slide? On the view?
Thank you.
Did you put my desk down? Oh, you should be able to go sit there. Full speed through? There was a piece.
Yes.
Gentlemen, thank you for, for presenting this evening. We're going to give you all five minutes for the presentation. Mr. Trevino will be keeping time, and we'll start the clock once you start your presentation.
Okay, well, good evening, and thank you very much for inviting ERO architects here to be part of this group on the selection for architects. Joining me is my partner, Jerry Gattasia. There are four partners at ERO. We are, your architect record have been for the last fifteen years, off and on, either through on-call projects or individual projects. You'll see some of those this evening when I go through the presentation. As what's in front of you is the slide presentation that we have. So first off, we are a Texas firm, but we're headquartered here in McAllen. We have twenty-six professionals at our McAllen office, just a few minutes away from you all. But we have locations throughout the state of Texas, as well as work throughout the state of Texas. We have three licensed architects, four licensed structural engineers, two licensed interior designers, and one accredited learning education planner on our team. All of us are the same team that will be working on your projects, if awarded any projects based on the selection. We have ten million total square feet of different kinds of spaces and different kinds of buildings in the public sector. I will note that some of these projects in the background of the slides are some of the projects that we've done throughout the state, as well as regionally. Three hundred K through twelve projects, this is our high school that we did in Houston. One hundred and seven elementary school projects, this is an elementary school that we did in Alphazal recently. Ninety-six high school projects, this is a three-story high school that we did in Seguin that opened two years ago. Fifty-five planning projects, this is a very unique elementary school that we did in Austin, which is outdoor learning as well as indoor learning. Thirty-seven middle school projects, this is the interior of one of our middle schools that has a lot of transparency and openness between outside and inside. Twenty high school career technology education additions or standalone buildings throughout the state. Twenty-two on-call school district contracts or working with twenty-two different school districts. Fourteen performing arts centers, thirteen of those are high school additions, many of them throughout this region. And number one is our focus in Westco. That's the number that we want you left with tonight. That is our intent, if selected, to be part of the Westco architectural team. So what I want to talk about are the savings that we've done and the projects that we've done for you over the last few years. We did seven Westco ISD re-roofed projects with an original budget of six billion dollars. You can see the list of the projects on the top right-hand corner. We had a savings of one point one million dollars for nineteen percent savings against budget of that project. We focus a lot on working towards that goal. The East High School Band Hall project that we did recently that opened about a year ago had original budget of five point two million dollars, so that was a savings of one point four million dollars or twenty percent savings from budget to the final, final closeout amount. We've saved for others. These are some of the projects that we've done throughout the last few years. One point three million dollars for South Texas College Nursing Building using C-MAR delivery. We saved eight million dollars in the Harlingen CISD Ninth Grade Academy a few years ago when we switched delivery methods from C-MAR to competitive seal proposal. We also did the same thing and made that recommendation to Houston for their forty-five million dollar high school and saved them fourteen million dollars on the, on the switch from C-MAR to CSP. So that is something that we do, we enjoy that, we, we have the ability to be able to provide that because of our cost estimating practices that we utilize in all of our projects. One more thing that I want you left with, we know WISD, we know Westco ISD, because we know your buildings. We were selected for your Long Range Facilities Master Plan that we delivered two years ago. And in that plan, we developed a roadmap with a prioritization schedule over the next ten years for all of your buildings to either renovate, replace, or repair on that Long Range Facilities Master Plan. We assessed thirty-two of your buildings, inside and out.
One minute?
Out, one minute? We, we looked at each of the schools and we provided a facilities condition index to see what needed to be replaced versus repaired on those projects. And we had community engagement with over four hundred individuals in the community when we did that Long Range Facility Plan, also with multiple workshops with the leadership and staff and the cabinet of the school district. So what I want you left with, we have Westco ISD experience over the last fifteen years. We do modern learning environments, connecting pedagogy with communities' culture. We serve twenty-two school districts and have a good, successful track record on being an on-call architect. And we're your eyes and ears on site. That's what we work with in terms of getting inspections, permits, and schedules done on time or under schedule, under budget. That's what we work on, and we've got a great success record on that. So with that, I'll invite any questions.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Gito. Mr. Gito?
He, they answered the, my questions on the presentation.
Thank you.
This is Sustaita?
Same, all questions were answered, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Trevino?
No questions.
Mr. De Los Santos?
No questions.
Mr. Wanzas?
I'm good, thank you very much.
You're more than welcome.
Appreciate the presentation, thank you very much.
Appreciate the opportunity to have a chance to work with the district again, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Coach my pass.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Dignack and Associates.
All right, perfect.
Okay, just really quick, it's going to be five minutes for the presentation. Mr. Trevino will be keeping time, and we'll start the clock as soon as you start presenting.
Okay, great. All right, thank you all, good afternoon, everybody, thank you for having us here. My name is Juan Mujica Junior.
I'm Hector Guevara.
I'm Ana Lucia.
And we're a part of Genak and Associates, we're based in Corpus. We, first of all, thank you for giving us an opportunity to just introduce ourselves to you guys. So our firm, we're over thirty years old, we established in Corpus Christi nineteen eighty-eight by Raymond Genak. We've been working in the valley, Raymond Genak is from Harlingen. We opened up branch office there in two thousand, and we've been doing work here in the valley since then. I'm the one that opened up the office in two thousand. I myself am from Westco, I'm alumni, class of eighty-four, Westco High School, proud Panther. We have expensive, extensive experience in planning, design, construction management. We have successfully completed all kinds of projects, and we're going to show you an example of some of those as well. We're a fully staffed architectural firms. Ninety percent of the work that we do is public work. We are a certified hub firm, we're a small business and minority-owned business as well. This is your team, obviously Raymond's to the left, and Raymond couldn't be here today because he's doing this very same thing in the Corpus area as well, so we're doing the valley. We're part of the Valley Office here as well. Obviously, you see myself, Ana, Hector, and Nicholas Genak is also part of the team as well. Our firm, as I mentioned, we're over twenty people strong. We have resources from the Corpus area, the valley, Harlingen, and McAllen. We've successfully completed over four hundred projects of educational facilities, which seventy-five percent, at least seventy-five percent of those facilities are renovations and additions. We understand budgets in school districts. K through twelve is our bread and butter, that's what we do. As Raymond says, we can do a school in our sleep. We have three offices in South Texas. As I mentioned, we're based in Corpus Christi, but we've been in the valley since two thousand. We have an office in McAllen and Harlingen as well. So we're going to talk a little bit about the design process and what we do. And there's some interesting things that we do here that we think are unique to us, that I think give us an edge and kind of make us a very unique firm, that we have a very high success rate. Once we get into a school district, we usually stay there. Most of our clients are repeat clients. Once we get somewhere, most of our clients, we've been their client, they've been our clients for twenty, thirty years, minimum. So these are part of the things that we do, we have a project initiation program. And every phase that you see here is very, very critical to the success of the project. And every one of those, we're going to be involved from day one. We're not going to come in and do our song and dance and then we're gone. This is the people you're going to see throughout the length of the project. I'll be involved from the beginning until the day you move in, and even then, if something happens, you guys have my cell phone number, you guys call me, and I will be there. Design charity sometime, I'm going to show you parts here shortly. The design development is also critical, we design, we develop the designs to give us. Construction documents are always critical, we communicate along with your staff to make sure that we're covering everything that you need, your maintenance folks are involved in whatever it is. We understand that your construction cost is your biggest cost, but your maintenance cost is your second biggest cost, and we tune to that as well. This is an example of a design charity, we do this with just about every project. We come to your place, and we visit with whomever you tell us, we're your stakeholders. You tell us who your team is, and we engage them in part of the design. And so we design together, we don't go to our office and design something in a vacuum and come back to you, how do you guys like this? No, we design together, we bring the stakeholders here, you tell us who they are, you tell us where to meet. We design with them, and at the end of the day, it's typically a one day of long meetings, we come up with a plan that everybody's on board with. We look at the things that don't work and discuss what didn't work. We talk to your transportation people, we talk to your food service people, we talk to your janitors, we talk to your librarians, special ed people. All of those people have a say, stakeholders in your facilities and school design. We need their input, we have the benefit of our experience, but in combination with your staff, we're able to combine and have a good product. This has ninety-nine percent success rate. One of the things we also do is we do facilities assessment. We just finished an assessment for this Corpus Christi IAD.
Sir, you have one minute?
We did over two hundred million square feet of space, we assessed it, and we just want to go through some. This is Matt's ISD High School, this is a school that we took in an old facility and brought it to the new world. We connected all of them through AC, so now everybody has the connection, the entrance has a new character as well. PSA ISD engages us to take over their old, old high school and convert it into a collegiate campus, which is not a dual enrollment campus, it has a CTE, career technology education. So here's some of the examples, these, this facilities are from nineteen forty, and you can see the services they provide out to their students. We, Region One, ISD also hired us to do, so the thing, this is an old bowling alley that we converted, and you can see the interior shots of that. He is the early contract gentleman of Rockson ISD, some shots there as well. South Texas ISD would convert an old furniture store into their new headquarters office right off the highway, the new face for them as well. We're also engaged with them to do their high school additions and renovations. And then finally, just, I just want to thank you for your time.
Thank you for the presentation, sir, we're going to open it up for questions, Mr. Gito?
What was the latest project, Mr. Mujica, that you worked on this, this past year?
The latest project that we what, sir?
You worked on?
Well, right now, we are working with Region One, actually, this project right now is under construction. South Texas ISD, I'm sorry, yeah, that's a current project that we're going on right now. We're converting forty thousand square feet into forty-five thousand square feet without adding the footprint. So we kind of manage space to add a second level, so now their, their, excuse me, their executive office, the superintendent and his cabinet is going to have their own specialized, specialized place. Their boardroom is such, and you understand, right now they have twenty-three board members, they're expanding possibly to thirty. We're designing a space that's multipurpose, they can have training rooms, it's partitionable, but you can also serve for training areas during the day for, for the school districts, but you can also serve as their, their board meetings, so then not only all the board members are there, but the whole community can come and partake in those meetings as well. That's one of the current ones that we have, we have worked for the city of Brownsville, we have worked for Edinburgh CISD, we're doing work with PSA ISD as well, we're doing work for Weran CISD. It's, it's a lengthy list, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is Sustaita?
Hi, good afternoon, I have two questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Have you ever worked with Westco ISD before?
Yes, ma'am, we actually did your Bogus Stadium. Bobby Lackstein, forgive me, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I did that one too, I'm sorry, yeah.
Can we have something like a Bogus Stadium?
We, actually, I, I think, I'm pretty proud of that. My nephews are proud that their uncle worked on that, that did that, so my mom's really proud, obviously, as well. But we, we did that, we did some work for, I think you guys, we started with you guys, but we ended up with, with somebody else, Sam Houston Elementary, I think you guys did, but that, that's the last project we did with Westco ISD, yes.
Okay, thank you. And then the second question was, do you have some kind of preventative maintenance program where you guys are checking up on, you know, whatever was installed or?
Yes, ma'am. So during our construction administration, we, we not only have progress meetings with the contractors, I'll give you an example, the roof is probably one of your most important elements of your, of your envelope. The firm that we use, we have a roofing consultant, we bring him on board, we design the system with them. We usually ask for a manufacturer's warranty, just in the event that the contractor and subcontractor, they go out of business in two, three years, we get the warranty from the manufacturer. So if something happened with them, the manufacturer's going to still take care of you. During the process of construction, that manufacturer is on site. They observe what's going on, they document what's going on, and they provide reports to us to see what's going on. And so, yeah, that, that's an example of some of the preventive stuff that we do, because they're the ones providing the warranty for twenty, twenty-five years. So if something happens, no, you got to fix this, and they fix it while it's constructing, not come back two, two years later, this is what happened.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Mr. Gito? Sir, what do you guys do to assure that you stay within budget and within timeframe?
Thank you for asking that.
On a project.
So one of the reasons I believe that we have a repeat clients is because just as I'm here today with you guys, we face the music upfront. We don't design in a vacuum, we don't design something that, the last thing we want to do is design something that you guys can afford. We're going to be upfront, we're going to be honest with you, and we're going to tell you, what you want is great, your vision is great, but with a budget you have, that simply just doesn't job, you just can't afford that. So we need to make decisions together, we need to prioritize what your current needs are, what's your most need that you have right now, and take care of that, and then plan for the future. So that's part of the discussion that we have from day one. When you start programming and you tell us how much space you have, we start using statistical data from that point and tell you with what you're telling me, what you want or you need. This is from our experience, this is the dollar amount that you need. And then we start coming together to meet at the road where it actually works for you. All right?
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Mr. De Los Santos?
My question's been answered.
Perfect.
None, thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation.
Once again, thank you all so much, we have some booklets, or do we provide them over? Okay, you can't throw, you won't throw.
Thank you.
Thank you guys again, again? Thank you once again. Good night.
Thank you very much. So next up, we have Gomez Mendez Science. So we're gonna, we're gonna have a five minute time limit. Mr. Trevino will be keeping time and the, the time will start once you start presenting.
Can I take this?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
A little brush of fresh air. Thank you. Good evening. I'm Rudy Gomez. This is David Monreal and Rowan Gomez. We are Gomez Mendez Science. First of all, I thank you for the opportunity to come and make the presentation. And if you have any questions at any time, please ask. Bobby, your first question is, who are we? Well, we're an architectural engineering firms that knows your needs. We know the problems that you're faced with. When I began my practice in nineteen seventy-six, one of my first jobs was the athletic building at the high school. Tony Rico picked us and so we succeeded in that project. Since then, we've designed or made additions to Rico, Central Middle, Tuckler Hill, Way Out Middle, Margot, Roosevelt, Calvio Kate, Mary Hoag, Sam Houston, South Palm Garden, Westaco High School, and Westaco East. When we did, when Westaco East was being built, it was built under a design build concept. And Westaco ISD selected us to be their onsite representative to protect your interests, which we did. And one project that we are very proud of is the Sepulveda Gymnasium. We submitted that and it won a Design Excellent Award from the Texas Society of Architects. Our consulting engineers that we use is trained in engineering here from Westaco and Sanin Engineering for the structural, and he's from McAllen. You know, during the design and, and the construction phase, we're only a phone call away to discuss with you whatever needs to be discussed and to give you the benefit of our experience. We're here when we're needed and we're gonna give you a hundred percent of our revenue. And we know our business. In the last six years, we've not had a job that we bid that's gone out of the money, that we had to come back and rebid. We're kind of proud of our history of change orders. When we did the Sheri Land High School, Pioneer High School, we had two change orders and that was for additional electrical services that were requested by the district. When we did Brownsville's Veterans High School, it was sixty-two million dollars and had no change orders. Uh, I think what makes us unique is that, is that there's the level of service that we provide to clients. We design facilities that are attractive, they're efficient, and low maintenance. I like to think that we're rated pretty highly for our client, by our clients. Since nineteen ninety-two, we've done all but one project for South Texas ISD. Since one nineteen ninety-five, we've done all of Sheri Land's work except for one project. And for those professionals, since ninety-six, we've done all their work except for one project. Another way that we always like to put it is we don't reinvent the wheel. We, with the experience we've had, we can use our, our, and be used with your instructional team to really fine tune your educational program. What we'd like to do now is show you some, some of our work.
These were two additions that we did for the Southern Middle School and the San Benito High School. These were between twenty-five hundred and four thousand square feet. The districts, the respective districts asked us to come in and give facelifts and provide new entrances and flare for that. So what we did, especially in the case of the San Benito High School, is that's actually a lit LED sign. So you can see it from the highway at night, the little greyhound cars.
And a couple of examples of our standalone buildings. This is the, the Hannah Early College High School Gymnasium. So it's a forty thousand square foot building. It's got two practice courts, a main competition court. You know, the retract, retractable bleachers. It'll sit over twenty-one hundred fans. The center court hung scoreboard, boys and girls team gymnasia or dressing rooms. That project was completed in December of twenty twenty. And then one of our most recent projects is the UTRGV Harlingen Collegiate High. So this is a sixty-six thousand square foot building. It's a partnership between UTRGV and H C ISD. So during the day, it's gonna be used as an early college high school and at night it'll be used as a UTRGV campus satellite building.
One of my professors' favorite savings was the human being is a creature of its environment. If you give them a good environment to work in, they'll work. And if you give them a good environment to learn in, he will learn. Rowan's has a handout that we'd like to give you. I don't know how we'll pass this out. But this is the, shows the twenty twenty rankings by U S News and World Report. Of the five hundred, excuse me, the five hundred best high schools in the nation. GMS is our ticket record for eight of the top fifty in the state of Texas. And fifteen of the top five hundred in the nation. Now, we're not taking credit for the, for the educational program. But what we are taking credit for is we design facilities that lend the students to learn.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. We're gonna open up to questions now, okay? Mr. Nieto.
He answered my questions on the projects that they have worked on here in Westco or UTRGV.
And Mrs. Susita?
I do have a question. Maybe I'm just a little confused around how it works. I saw that you work with MEP and Trinity engineers. I know that we picked engineers ourselves, kind of like the round robin. How does that work? You guys pick who you want or we, if you were, if we were to pick you tonight, how does that work with the, with the engineers and who we're working with?
Um, a lot of this will depend on who you select for your on-call. Quite honestly, we've worked with just about every MEP and civil engineers and structural engineers in the valley and for different districts throughout our, our tenure. So that's not really an issue if the district has somebody that's, let's say, not on our particular team like this.
Okay, so you could be okay with working with different? Okay, that's my question. Thank you.
Mr. Trevino?
I have a question. What do you guys do? I know you guys are the architects and so forth. How do you manage or oversee to make sure that the final product is one hundred percent complete with no, you know, the cosmetic stuff?
Normally, on, on more complex projects like the gymnasium, we have meetings weekly. Uh, other, on smaller projects, we have set milestones so that we get to those milestones. We have a, we have a resident inspector, Ray Sanchez, who's got thirty years of inspection services. Graduate of University of Houston and he does all our, he does those inspections along with the engineers that, that do the, do the work, the structural and the mechanical, the civil.
Thank you, sir. Mr. De Los Santos? Mr. Gonzalez?
I have none.
Okay. That'll be it. Thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
And next up, we have, is it Milnet Architectural Services? Okay, before you begin, we're gonna, we're gonna give you five minutes for the presentation. Mr. Trevino will be keeping time and he'll start the clock as soon as you all start presenting.
Well, good evening, board members, president of the board, superintendent. I'm Rudy Molina with Milnet Architectural Services and I brought with me.
Olivia Curry is a project manager with Milnet.
And Ramon Villalobos with Milnet Project Manager.
Milnet Architectural Services has been in business for over twenty-one years. I worked in Houston for seventeen and then I moved down here twenty-one years ago and started Milnet Architectural Services. In Houston, I mainly worked for a three-hundred man corporate firm and we didn't do schools. So it took us a while to get into the school arena. And actually, we did start, Westaco was one of the first school districts along with Edinburgh that we started working with. That was back in two thousand eight, two thousand ten. Currently, we're working with PSJ on some of the ESER grant money on two other high schools for the MEP re-roofing, uh, windows and doors that are part of that, that grant. We have worked in everything from grant projects to bond projects and they'll cover that during the course of the presentation. We have over thirty-two projects in the last ten years. Previously that, we have more projects with school districts. So we're, we're all versed in different projects, everything from small half a million dollars to, I think our highest has been twelve million. I was, I have thirty-seven years of experience, twenty-seven have been as a registered architect. And that's one of the things we do is you'll always have a licensed architect at every single one of your meetings. You're not gonna have some rep that isn't licensed. The two project architects, Raymond has been with us or Ramon has been with us for eighteen years. We have very little turnover. Olivia has fourteen years of experience and she has her master's in architecture. And we have Mirta Orlando and Neftali. Neftali is our most recent hiring. He has six years. We don't have a lot of turnover, so people are experienced because it is a practice. You learn as you go. And that's kept us out of trouble because you build on that experience and that helps our clients get a better product.
Okay, thank you. And as Rudy mentioned, we've worked on all types of projects. I'm just briefly gonna go over some of our design experience. For example, we've worked with the Edinburgh CISD. We've done Fine Arts Edition, Alvarientes, three million dollar project. We've also done large renovation projects, for example, Robert Vela High School. That was a nearly ten million dollar renovation project. And we also do the smaller items like the gymnasium additions. And we also do have a bond experience. For example, we did a thirty-five million dollar bond project for Brooks County ISD. We did everything from the initial assessment to their budgeting for the bond. And this included four campuses. Two were brand new and two consisted of renovations and additions. So from the time that we started the assessment to when we actually finished the last campus, it took us approximately seven years to complete everything. We've also done, like Rudy mentioned, work with PSJ ISD. We did a new elementary school, Daniel Ramirez, that came in at twelve million dollars. That was completed back in two thousand fifteen. And now to present the project management plan is Olivia.
Good evening. So as your architectural services team, we pride ourselves in providing a holistic approach. So what does that mean? As Mr. Molina, as the architect and Raymond and I are project managers, we like to start from beginning to end to make sure that Westaco ISD gets the best service possible. We pride ourselves in being the people that you see at your project meetings, being involved with your projects. So that means that from the beginning, we like to understand the project goals, meaning the budget, schedule, course, the scope of work. And so this list is just a brief description of the services that we provide as an architectural firm. What we want you to know is that we are the team you'll be working with and we are knowledgeable in the services that we provide. And the major goals that usually every project has is they wanna stay within budget, within schedule. And so we have expectations from our team along the way that we work with the district to ensure that we stay within budget, we stay within schedule by looking at things like value engineering, by looking at things like long lead times, understanding during renovations that sometimes that there's things that are unforeseen. So given our experience, we're able to provide you better service. We like to provide strategies to stay within budget and schedule, such as identifying opportunities to save. Like I mentioned, value engineering is a big thing that we do nowadays because the market is a little bit flexible right now. And then as far as the schedule goes, we like to set a substantial completion date early and understand what's gonna impact that schedule to make sure that the district is informed along the way. And of course, having a successful project means that the district is happy, that the community has a project that better serves them. And so as a team, we pride ourselves in that. Thank you for considering Milnet Architectural Services. We look forward to serving you and we'll answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Now I'll start with Mr. Nieto.
The questions were answered in the presentation.
Mrs. Susita?
Same. Thank you very much.
Mr. Trevino?
For my, my question is, what do you, what do you do to make sure we stay within budget of construction? And obviously it comes down to time. What do you do to, sort of, to stay within the timeframe?
At that, at that point, mainly because it's during construction, we have to get the contractor really involved. And we have been working with various contractors that we're familiar with. We've, uh, we usually have a, a methodology of early documentation with them as they're falling behind and asking them what they can do to speed up the process. We do start, especially right now because of COVID and, and delays. We do ask them early on, even, we, we're starting a project. This is nonprofit for Salvation Army. We already know the metal building is gonna be coming in April. So we, we work with him to get him on schedule. What can you do while you're waiting on the metal building? He goes, well, I can work on the site plan. I can do the utilities. I can do all these things. He can even lay the foundation and he can actually get the steel before he gets the actual encapsulated building. So the steel he'll get in January, so it'll take him up to the end of January, February to finish. So he'll only have a month lag time when he gets, in April, when he gets the metal building. But these are things you have to do from the very beginning of the project with that contractor. So we, we work not in a, uh, offensive way with them. We try to work with them and of course, bring the, the client in early. In this case, the client is corporate out of Atlanta. They handle all the Salvation Army stuff. So we have meetings with them to, to let them know their expectations and how things are coming along. It won't affect the deadline that they have, but we're just letting them know, you're not gonna see this building go up until April. So don't panic. We're still gonna meet the deadline in June. So those are some of the things that we've done to, to, at, uh, that would adversely affect the deadline. We work as early as we can with that contractor, especially because of the situation currently happening, uh, just for materials arriving.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. De Los Santos?
No questions at this time. Thank you.
And Mr. Gonzalez?
I have none. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you so much.
Hello, good evening. So we're gonna go ahead and give you five minutes for the presentation. Mr. Trevino will be keeping time and clock will start once you start presenting.
Awesome. Well, good evening, everybody. Thank you again for allowing, allowing us the opportunity to come by and introduce ourselves, present ourselves. My name is Saul Magonado. I'm the president for Sainsbury. With me is Mr. Adán Álvarez. He's our registered.
With me is Mr. Adán Álvarez, he's our registered architect. So just briefly, obviously, you have our qualifications, wanna go through kinda who we are, a little bit about us. 13-year-old company, we have a full-service firm, architecture, construction, engineering and surveying. Over the last three-year average, about 18 million annually, 96 employees, including licensed certified personnel. We are Texas hub, federal hub zone and SBA 8A firm. We have a GSA schedule for construction manager inspection. Our mission statement is here, our mission statement is really one of the most things that we're most proud of is to develop a legacy of leadership, succession, serving communities worldwide. So that's something we take great pride in, in our personnel. Again, a little bit about us, local government, we have Guermano experienced local government with school districts, including Ed Cowell, Chelso, La Jolla, Edinburgh, CIST, Far Housing Authority, Mission Housing, Idalgo County Housing Authority, Elsa Housing, and then local county and local cities as well, including a lot of our federal clients for the Army Corps, Navy, Air Force, DHS, USDA. Now, in your notes, we are a one-year architectural firm, registered architectural firm for one year, but over the last 13 years, we have designed a lot of projects. So we have over half, half a million square feet of industrial cold storage facility space, over 100,000 square feet of commercial office space and over 200,000 square feet of multifamily residential space that we have designed in-house in our offices and engineered and surveyed. Architectural-wise, Adán brings a lot to the table and that's why when we opted to become a fully registered architectural firm is with Adán's experience. And I'll let him take over a little bit, discuss his experience.
Good afternoon, good evening. As Saul mentioned, I'm Adán Álvarez, I'm a registered architect, been licensed for about 21 years. Been in the industry for at least 30 years. My experience has been pretty broad, I've done a lot of architectural design work and project management. I worked for the Edinburgh School District at least three years as their district architect and I managed their 2,000 bond funds in the development elementary schools, middle schools and a high school, which was the Edinburgh High School. I also worked for the University of Texas System, five years, project manager, senior project manager, where I managed over 50 million dollars worth of work for the campus at UT Brownsville and I opened the new campus at UTRGV, which is in Rio Grande City. After that, I spent almost eight years working for the Texas State Technical College, also as a senior project manager and in-house architect, where I managed a number of projects, capital projects, renovations, new construction, a variety of, variety of projects. So that's who I am.
I really, why same? So we feel that our unique mix of disciplines provide a multi-point-of-view approach. So we have engineers in the office, surveyors, construction managers, estimators, certified schedulers in P6. So we feel this is a strong mix of capabilities that helps any project out. Our familiarity with state and federally funded project requirements again provides ease of compliance. And then our team qualifications, we provide a highly qualified project manager with specialized institutional experience. Of course, we are ready to serve, we're always ready to serve and I'll take, I'll take any questions.
Thank you for that presentation and I'll start with the questions with Mr. Nieto.
The questions were answered.
Uh, I'm just verifying, it says here in my sheet with your information that you've been in business for one year?
So the business 13 years, architectural, registered, one year.
Okay, thanks for the clarification, thank you.
My question, and this is what I've been asking everybody, is just, what do you guys do in order to stay within budget and within timeframe?
Well, during design, we work closely, if it's a construction manager at risk procedure or competitive seal proposal, as Saul mentioned, we have in-house cost estimation. And one of, one of the most important parts about every step of design is to continue your estimating efforts to ensure that you're always in budget.
And the reason I ask that is because, you know, I've seen contractors, at the beginning, they all start with, you know, 100 miles an hour and so forth, and then towards the end, when everything's coming together and all the final details, that's probably one of the toughest, toughest of the project is, is, and that's when you need them there the most. But by then time, by that time, excuse me, they're already, they already have another job or two scheduled in front of them. So, you know, that, that's why I'm asking that question.
Understood.
Yeah, that's where the construction administration portion comes in, in the project manager and again, the estimating and the scheduling.
Mr. De Los Santos?
Yes, I have a question. How many school projects have you done? I know you listed a dollar amount, a total value, but how many independent projects have you done with school districts? And any, and, and what is your most recent project here, I guess, in the valley?
The most recent project, I guess, for me, it was with Texas State Technical College, where I renovated a 63,000 square foot facility. It was about 8 million dollars, it belonged to Lockheed Martin. We pretty much renovated the facility from an open shell into labs like wind energy technology, mechatronics, telecommunications and biomedical equipment technology. That's the most recent for me. School-wise, I've been involved in a number of, in high school project for Edinburgh School District and I've renovated two administration buildings, two elementary schools. That was Carmanabila and the middle school on Duffin Road.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez?
No, I finally just answered the question.
Okay, thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you, everybody, have a great evening.
Thank you.
Good evening, thanks for work too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
With your permission, may I allow to take this off so I don't sound like my fault? Okay.
I wanna give you just, just some instructions real quick.
Yes, sir.
We're gonna do a five-minute presentation. Mr. Trevino will be keeping the time and he'll start the clock as soon as you start presenting there. Thank you.
Thank you, you ready? Good evening. My name is Laura Nasri Warren, I am the president and founder of the Warren Group Architects, Inc. And it's a real honor to be here today. With me, I have two senior project managers, Nate Peters and Crystal Chavez. Our team has designed over 6 million square feet of projects and counting. The Warren Group was founded in 2004 and provides award-winning services to the education, health first, healthcare research, federal agencies and worldwide manufacturing entities that are expanding or establishing anywhere in the US and Mexico. The Warren Group Architects has well over 185 repeat customers worldwide. Here's a sample of our longtime customers. What does this mean to you? There's more than school districts here. The global experience we have in working with different trades ensures Westlaco ISD a wealth of crossover ideas and innovative solutions. By having immediate contact with technology manufacturers keeps us an insight of what is available and what is coming. While our medical research and public facility experience provides our clients with applicable know-how, solutions and resources for infection disease prevention, detection technology, as well as all level of security needs. Our team is vested in the community, including the city of Westlaco and the ISD. It starts with us. When COVID hit, many companies, including our competitors, focus and continue and work from the safety of their homes. While the Warren Group was at the forefront, delivering emergency design to both the healthcare and public entities while reaching out to our community to see what we could do. We call our industrial resources and were able to purchase and donate it well over 25,000 very much needed masks and disposable glove boxes throughout the Rio Grande Valley. Our team donated to the city of Westlaco over 2,000 masks and gloves for their forefront workers. Don't let the high heels fool you. Our construction face delivery approach is to focus on Westlaco ISD needs and ensure project delivery in time and within budget. By establishing closely monitoring project and construction delivery schedules, confirming costs early in the process, executive, execute, sorry, a comprehensive code compliance evaluation, we are code experts. This avoids any delays and permits process. We will also assist you with grant support materials, assist with bidding process and general contractor selection and we will administer project closer. And yes, we also provide post-construction services at no extra cost to you. The following projects and examples of our culture solution-based services that are tailored to meet the specific needs of each of our clients, we realize that no two projects are alike. The city of Fernaditorium. We provide a full design and construction phase services for the 72,800 square feet, state-of-the-art facility designed to meet Olympic certification requirements known as FINA, NCAA and of course, UIL. This facility is provided with a 50-meter competition pool, a 25-yard diving pool, both provided with the latest touchpad technology, full digital displays with action video mega screens. The facility has a 1,000-seat capacity arena-style seating and is scheduled to open its doors by the end of the year. And yes, it is still within budget. The Center for Education and Economic Development, a 54,650 square feet facility renovation. When you see this, the results of this very popular facility, you will not imagine that this is a former abandoned Kmart, then Ropo Sada warehouse, which was in heavy disrepair. Our team provided strategic master plan, full design, construction phase services and procurement for this project. With a budget of 3.6 million dollars, we repaired the site, building facade and roof repair. We provided multi-tenant options, open office concepts, multi-function spaces, training areas and a small business incubator. UTRGV and DHR, multidisciplinary medical research facility. We serve as the planner and architect of record for the 37 million state-of-the-art facility delivered as a P3 scenario.
And we have one minute?
Yes, sir. The extensive design and construction of the facility requires expertise in latest research, technology, innovation, as well as multi-cell, multi-level secured access measures. This facility was delivered within budget and ahead of time. What we will do for you, for the Westlaco ISD, if we're selected, our team will deliver for you design solutions that will embrace child development and growth, understand the needs and provide a facility flexible to accommodate multiple uses. Response to change in technology and is provided with infrastructure to add new equipment and features for future and added activities and programs. We will apply experience and knowledge in dealing with child safety and provide some measures to prevent spread of infectious diseases. Our design will meet the growing needs of the school district management and operations. We will design to grow and flexibly to meet changing needs of a growing community. We will identify other possible facilities and measure. The Warren Group is driven by a cultural service and solutions that are beyond ordinary. Thank you for the opportunity in presenting.
Thank you, we're gonna open it up for questions now, we'll start with Mr. Nieto. Mrs. Sustaita?
No questions, they're all answered, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Trevino?
My question is, you as, as assigned architects, what do you do to assure that, that the companies, that the project is staying within budget and within the timeframe?
I am a certified construction expert, multiple countries. And because we do with a private industry, when we get hired, we charge flat fees, no percentage of cost. What this means to you is that we're not change order happy. It is in my best interest to make sure that we also finish the project within time because it costs me more money as well. And if I save you money and I help my clients keep their money and make money, they're gonna wanna help me or give me more projects because I can do more for them. That's refreshing and it's unheard of. Because we stay on track with multiple projects and we also do construction management and project management for multiple countries worldwide or multiple companies, from worldwide in the US and Mexico, we are up to date with what's costing and even help the contractors find materials that are hard to find for medical hospital and also woodcrafters, Reynosa. We helped Cross Border trying to find steel. We did that also for the VA in Houston very recently, find air conditioning. We found out that steel, and we know this, meets USDA standards and if it comes from Monterrey, we have identified that. And we were able to get it quicker. Companies like Woodcrafters, Corning, Panasonic, all of them, they have to meet requirements of the money production. So we, we cannot delay. It doesn't cost me any money, I don't sell furniture, I don't sell steel, I don't sell any other materials. But if I can get you there on time, if your students can get in there and start learning, then I'm doing my job.
Now, the reason I asked that question, ma'am, was because, you know, construction projects, and you, you hit a great point here and you being certified, certified construction person. Everybody starts with, with, everybody starts with a project, 100 miles an hour, you're, you're contractors. And midway or three-fourths of the way through the project was, they're already looking ahead for the next projects and then that's when the delays start, I believe.
We, I understand that. The problem with increased construction cost is a global problem. And a lot of people will tell you, oh, it's COVID, it's COVID, and they don't understand really why COVID is the cause of this. It also is caused by USMCA. Because I've been involved statewide and in other forms, the commissioner, one of the commissioners for the Finance Commission of Texas and the past chairman of the Board for Economic Development. I'm aware of what's going on in the bottlenecking we have in India and Vietnam and all the cargo ships that we have waiting in California just to unload and there's no available staff to do that. We establish options with you. We start identifying the ones and the needs, okay, what do we need right now? What do you see in the future? What can we catch you differently to be able to meet that demand? For the Nattorium, instead of making it a block, which is what everybody's doing, we found this material in Canada, magnesium core that is highly resistant to humidity and not happy with just the information that we received. We conducted our own research and dipped in five buckets of water, different pieces of this magnesium core. And it didn't disintegrate, it looks like Jiford, but once you put it in there for five days, nothing happened to it. It, it won us an innovation award. And with that said, we saved money in structure, foundation, it's lighter, construction went faster and they got, they have a much, much better product with that. And guess what? It cost me the same amount of time and money in my firm to be able to do it, design it out of block than to this. It's a flat fee, so by investing the time and effort and also saving you money, I'm not crucifying myself and making less, so I think it's a very fair approach. You know, there's no dramas, no anything, just service. We're service and solution oriented.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. De Los Santos?
No questions at this time, thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Gonzalez?
I have none, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your, for your time and for the presentation.
Really appreciate the opportunity, take care.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mask on, mask on, sorry. Sorry for the babbling, I was nervous.
So, Mr. Santos, I believe that's the last of the presentations. Are we good for now to adjourn this meeting? And then we're gonna-
Then there's a general for the board to consider selection.
So I'll move to item five adjournment? And it's 7:13 PM.
Good evening, I am Dr. Jaime Rodriguez, Vice President of the Westlaco ISD Board of Trustees. This special board meeting is being conducted pursuant to open, to the Open Meetings Act. Notice of this meeting has been posted online for at least 72 hours. The board is meeting by the use of Google Meets and telephone transmission, which allows two-way communication for members of the public during public comments. A recording of this meeting is being made and will be available to the public at a later date. The time is now 7:14 PM. And I call this meeting to order, I will now begin the roll call. Mr. Nieto?
Present.
Mrs. Sustaita?
Present.
Mr. Trevino?
Present.
Mr. De Los Santos?
Present.
And Mr. Gonzalez?
Present.
Let the record show that a quorum of board members are in attendance. And I will now move on to item three, public comments. And I will now move on to item three, public comments. I have one. Elvia Sandoval? I'm gonna just read a few comments before you start, okay, ma'am? Just some procedures here. So before I, I, I read the procedures, I'm gonna have you state your full name and your full address, please.
May I pass this out before we get started?
Sure.
With my timer?
Sure. Okay, ma'am, maybe you can just state your full name and your address, please?
My name is Elvia Sandoval, and I live at 1308 Florida in Mercedes.
And I'm gonna just read a few statements here, okay? Pursuant to the Texas Open Meeting Act, the Board of Trustees may not deliberate on any comment made by a member of the public on a subject that is not included on the agenda posted with notice of this meeting. As per the Texas Attorney General, the scope of board discussion for a subject not part of the meeting agenda is limited to only proposal by a board member to place the subject on a future board agenda. Specific factual information or recitation of existing policy may be furnished in response to inquiries, but the board shall not deliberate or decide regarding any subject that is not included on the agenda posted with notice of the meeting. Audience participation at a board meeting is limited to the portion of the meeting designated for that purpose. At all other times during a board meeting, the audience shall not enter into discussion or debate on matters being, being considered by the board unless recognized by the presiding officer. No public comment presentation shall exceed five minutes. Any disruptive behavior by any speaker may result in the speaker's removal from participation in the meeting. Please be mindful of using names or personally identifiable information as there is no immunity from defamatory comments while participating in public comments. So, once you start, Mr. Trevino, we'll, we'll start the five-minute clock for you, okay?
Okay. I am referring to item number four on the agenda. Before I begin, I would like to thank and commend those board members who made it possible to have the forensic audit. You did what was right regardless of how your political career would be affected. Good evening, board members, board president, and superintendent. My name is Elvia Sandoval. I'm a former employee at Wesaco ISD with over 40 years of experience in education. I worked under two awesome principals, Mr. Budmer and Mr. Vallejo. I say awesome because they were all about the students and made sure that, one, as an educator, made our students our priority. After reading part of the audit online, I, I felt compelled to come tonight to express to you how one individual with power and authority was able to control who was hired in this district regardless of whether an individual was recommended by the interviewing committee and the principal. My daughter was one of those individuals affected by the actions of the person in charge of HR. How can a board allow someone to affect the livelihood of another human being? As a former board member, I know what it's like to hold a position, which all of you do presently. I would have been very upset to find out that even though the proper hiring steps took place, a candidate would be rejected regardless of the recommendation of the principal and the interviewing committee. During the hiring process, my daughter went through unfair and unusual treatment. Although the district audit shows only one interview, I'd like the board to be aware that this process took place twice. The second interview included an added composition, portion, and a different interviewing committee. Even after being interviewed twice by the interviewing committees and approved by those committees and the principal, she was told she had to go through HR. After going through all the steps, my daughter's name was not presented to the board for approval. Now that this audit has been completed and you can see the injustices that have taken place, what steps will you take to remedy the situation in particular? I will now read part of the audit that mentions my daughter in the event. You have not had a chance to read this part of the audit. As part of our investigation, we identified multiple instances in which candidates recommended by their interviewing committee for teacher positions were not approved for being, or being submitted to the HR department. A summary of our review of these instances is provided below. On December 22, 2017, the HR department posted a vacancy for an English language arts teacher position at Mary Hope Middle School to replace Antonio Redondo. The position was closed on January 8, 2018, with 26 candidates submitting applications and nine candidates were interviewed by the interviewing committee. On January 11, 2018, the principal at Mary Hope Middle School, Paulo Vallejo, submitted a recommendation for employment form to Ms. Agura recommending Selena Sandoval for the ELA teacher position to replace Mr. Antonio, Mr. Redondo. Based on a discussion with Mr. Vallejo, after submitting the recommendations, Ms. Agura notified him that the candidate recommended by the interviewing committee, Ms. Sandoval, would not be recommended to the board and that he, that he would need to recommend a different candidate or hire a permanent substitute to fill the position for the remainder of the year. In response, Mr. Vallejo submitted a memorandum to Ms. Agura on January 15, 2018, outlining the basis for the interviewing committee's recommendations. Despite the interviewing committee's recommendations to hire Ms. Sandoval and subsequent memorandum to Ms. Agura justifying their decision, Ms. Sandoval was never recommended to the board to, for the position. In addition, Ms. Sandoval would have been pre-screened by the HR department when she submitted her application, indicating that she met the requirements for the position and hold a valid teaching certificate. I would like to thank you again for your time and hope that you realize what was done to my daughter was an injustice and that you will find a way to fix it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. I will now move on to item four, presentation and discussion of corrective action plan for the Human Resources Department in response to the forensic audit findings and recommendations. Dr. Gonzalez?
Vice President, Dr. Rodriguez, trustees, and members of the audience. First, I'd like to share that Wesaco ISD is a school district built on a solid foundation of excellence. We're 100 years strong. And every organization that exists strives to become better. And we are no different. Last Monday, we received the Weaver and Tidwell LLC presentation of the forensic audit final findings and recommendations based on report of investigation number one, human resources. That's a powerful tool. It's a tool that can be used in positive ways to refine systems, to enhance processes. It's in, it's a tool of evaluation. It's not necessarily seen as something negative. It's positive because every organization exists to become better. And so we have, as a district administrators, as executive leaders of this school system, carefully examined the, the reports. And like I said, it serves as a powerful tool to move forward and to make Wesaco ISD better. District administration has developed a living document, and it's dynamic. It's a corrective action plan, just like a district improvement plan that takes place on an annual basis. And that purpose is to remedy or mitigate the deficiencies within a department. And it's also to just simply refine our systems and, and strengthen our internal controls. So this evening, we have our two new directors for human resources. So I'm gonna welcome to the podium this evening for the first time, Dora Lisa Savala and Mr. Daniel Budmer. They will be presenting this evening to the Board of Trustees, to myself, and to members of the audience. Team, you may proceed.
Thank you, Dr. Valdez, Dr. Rodriguez, trustees, and to those joining us either online or here. As Dr. Valdez mentioned, in front of you, you have a paper that is our corrective action plan. You may see it as a piece of paper. We see it as a living document. These are the initial steps we are taking. It's been a crash course, we can tell you. But I can tell you this much. As presentations were made last Monday, as we were fortunate to be named directors, our hearts hurt also as members of this district. We've taught in this district or worked in this district for many years. These are our coworkers. So we take that very personal, but we also realize, just as Dr. Valdez mentioned, it's to grow. That's our goal. Education is always about growth. It's not a finished product. I wish I could say I was, I wish we could say we were, we're not. So with that said, we are gonna begin some initial findings that we have and that we're working towards.
So what we've outlined here in the first few slides, and we're, we're not gonna read them because you've seen them in the audit, but we've provided them as part of the summary, are the recommendations that were outlined by Weaver and Tidwell. We've indicated the page numbers and the numbering of the actual recommendations. And what we'll do is when we go through the, the goals and the actions that we have outlined so far, we will refer to these. Are you controlling it, Carlos? Yeah, well, let's go to the next one. So we'll refer to these recommendations here on the slides. You can go ahead and go on to the next one there, too.
Can you go ahead and provide just the page numbers for the, for the first slide that you had?
Sure. So the first one through eight that you'll see there on pages 10 and 11 in the report number one. And then the third slide, well, it starts at the, the end of the second slide where you see number 8A through E. Those are on pages 70 and 71 of the report. Okay, so we can move on, Carlos. We're gonna start here with our, our first goal here, which we have set out as rebranding our HR department image. Turn this over to you.
So a couple of things, just so you can see, as we said, our goal number one, even though it wouldn't be so much as it is laid out in the audit, as it is our chance to rebrand our image. We want to be the face of our district. We want to make sure that we lead with a face that's with integrity and honesty. So some of the things we're looking at, just real simple, and we're not gonna go step by step, but a couple of the things you can see in this. Number one, we want to build relationships with our staff. That's in our office staff, within human resources, within our buildings, within our departments. We want to build relationships. The second and big thing that keeps coming up as you go through different portions of the audit, we want to establish a system of transparency with recruitment, right? So we want it with acquisition, with onboarding staff, with our staff development processes. We want to be transparent. We want to know what, we want everyone to understand what the systems are that are taking place. And those are some of the things that we still have to put into. And you know, like, with anything, I can tell you, we can develop the plan, but it's gonna be the implementation of the plan, it's gonna be critical as we move forward.
Move on to the next slide. So the second goal that we've outlined, and this goal actually addresses recommendations number two, three, four, five, eight, A, eight, C, and eight, D of the report, is to streamline the departmental systems and procedures. So essentially, what we're looking at here is reviewing the systems that are in place with the department, reviewing the procedures and, and the framework, and then setting in place a streamlined system, actual guidelines and procedures. You'll see there from some of the strategies, you know, one of the recommendations from the audit was to cross-train HR staff. So that's a high priority. Another is to actually have those verbalized, those written procedures, establishing, establishing an electronic HR department manual, procedures manual, that will make available to outline not only the systems that are in place and the improvements to the systems, but also the persons responsible, the duties, the staff members, and then what those expectations and timelines would be. And then, of course, another one of those recommendations revolved very highly around job descriptions. In fact, it was mentioned twice in the report for the recommendations. So as part of those systems and procedures, it's ensuring that we have that system for the review of job descriptions, for the update of job descriptions, and to make sure that we have those cross-checks in place to make sure that everything is accurate.
With goal three, we're really looking at a lot of automation of our system. In the short time that we have been working with our HR staff, we realize a lot is being done by hand. So we're looking to automate our systems. We hope through the automation of our systems, it can also contribute to being more transparent. We can get more information out, we can onboard quicker with staff, but again, it's acquisition and then following up with records management. The goal is to get our records management into, you know, I, I'll say it this way, into the 21st century, right? We want to have it, like I said, where it is transparent, where it's digitized. So that's one of the things with goal three. The automation is gonna be a big portion of what we have to do moving forward, and we've already been exploring some steps in the initial few days.
And I think the, the positive aspect here in, in reaching this goal is we already have a system that the district uses. And we, from what we understand, from what we've been able to learn in just a few short days, is that it may have a capability that we need to be able to provide this automation. So that's something that we think that we can probably put in place relatively quickly. It's just a matter of discovering what the system that we currently have is able to do, and then defining what those processes and procedures need to be and making sure that it addresses those critical areas. So in, in this respect, this goal, this is something, again, and you'll see there at the bottom, it, it addresses the recommendations two, three, and then those specific recommendations in eight, which have to do with procedures and systems in, in place, A, B, C, and D. And we feel, again, as though it's something that, since the district already has that system in place, we can probably turn this around relatively quickly. We'll move on to the next slide. So goal number four, it involves reforming the onboarding process. And like Mr. Budmer mentioned, this has been done by hand on paper. It's time-consuming, and studies that we've seen have shown that that onboarding process, if it is too time-consuming, there are situations where you can lose personnel that you recommended, and, and acquisition of personnel is key, and this onboarding process ties directly in with that. So what we want to ensure is, again, that we can not only reform it, but automate it as well. There are systems in place that are used by many other districts where there are kiosks that are used, there are automated systems, and again, that should tie in with systems that we already have housed here in the district. Looking at something as simple as, like I said, electronic kiosks, notifying employees quickly that they have been hired and starting that process right away, and then again, streamlining that coordination with other departments, making sure that technology is onboard with that, that payroll is onboard with that, so that we have a quicker turnaround from the time an employee is approved here by the board to when they can actually report to their, to their job site. Next slide.
And one of the big things we also need to make sure is, as part of human resources, it's the training of staff. Right? We want to follow up. As I mentioned, as I began the presentation, none of us are a finished product. But one of the things we need to continue to do is be, is be training staff, but we also need to be documenting that training that is taking place. So as we've mentioned numerous times, you know, we're looking to automate systems. We have some systems in place, but we just need to have better utilization of them. The one system we are mentioning that we think that we can start to use the components of Aleo, we use it right now for a lot of our budgeting and our purchases, but from our understanding from some initial conversations, it has a lot more bells and whistles that we can implement, some different modules. So we have things in place, we just need to utilize them better. We have a lot in place for our training and staff development, but we need to do a better job of making sure that things are documented and they're there. Those are the things that lead to transparency. Those are what leads to trust. And there's, obviously, we need to build the trust back within our community, and we want to lead it through our department. That's a goal.
This is the, the last slide here in our presentation. So at this point, if you have any questions for us that we So at this point, if you have any questions for us that we can address at this time.
I do have some questions. I was just jotting down notes as you were speaking. I know that there's a lot of recommendations and goals on here, but specifically what concerns me, and it wasn't mentioned, maybe it was mentioned, and I've been saying this over and over, the job grades and the people that are already there right now, and if they fit the qualifications for the job grade they're in right now, is something very concerning to me, especially with the certifications of people on the 100s. I don't know how we're going to go about that and deal with things like that, but I would really, really like to look into those positions that are vacated right now for people that don't have the qualifications.
So the good thing there is we're already reviewing that process. So we right now are undergoing a TASB salary staffing and comprehensive or compensation study. So that is underway right now. And the recommendations that we've seen moving forward are this, this is a lengthy process. We've been told that we likely will not have a report until probably around March. So it's going to take some time for us to get that information back. They're doing a very extensive study. But at this point, once we get that report and we have those recommendations, then we have a better idea of what specific areas need to be addressed. And we also have this procedure in place so that we can continue to do this on, I believe the recommendation was every five years.
Okay, and another question. Our job as school board is governance and to oversee the budgets and the financing and the compensation plan. Last time we met, we said we're going to approve it with modifications. There were a couple of positions on there that, you know, it had to be cleaned up still, the compensation plan, and certain things like gas stipends and other things like that. Have you guys sort of working on, I mean, I know you have a lot to do, but is that like on the bullet list, you know? Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Yeah, it is, and we have started looking at it already, but it is one of the high priority things that we're looking.
Yes, and Mrs. Sustaita, if I could add, that is noted in the forensic audit. And so we've, administration has started already looking into the travel allowance. And if I can go back, the audit report does reference not adhering to the compensation plan. So now we're closely looking at, you know, moving forward as far as pay families and the, and like you're mentioning, the qualifications for each individual, for each employee. So you know, that TASB study will, and review will, if you will, reset everything. And then moving forward, it's just adhering to the district's compensation plan.
Yes.
But that work's already started.
And I can tell you, Mrs. Sustaita, in our short tenure, right? What is it, about one week?
Yep.
I think every conversation we've had in reference to a job, the first question that's come out of our mouths that we've learned is, is it in the compensation plan?
Yeah.
That's the first thing.
Another thing that many people have told us during this whole audit is the customer service of when people call in, the phones are answered. You're saying we're going to rebrand it. That's great. That's what we want to hear because, you know, it's been, it needs a lot of work. And another thing that also that I've spoken to, talked about this about is, as board members, people call us all the time, "Hey, I haven't gotten an interview. Do you know why?" I don't know. But just the simple communication, I don't know if this is somewhere in your, you know, let people know you didn't qualify because of this.
Right. So you'll see that a little bit more comprehensively in the full plan that you have, where we outlined activities and under the strategies, and here we're just sharing a summary. But in your plan, and again, like Dr. Valdez mentioned, this is a living document. So it's something that we have revisited and revised, and it's shared with the superintendent, the assistant superintendent. So it's something that we're all looking at together. And I want to turn to, you know, when Mr. Buttermer and I first met with the staff, that was the first message was customer service. Is not just, you know, getting that trust back in the department, but making sure that we provide that service. And I think the phrase you used was the service with a smile. You know, that we provide that customer service from our office, because we are often the first department that's contacted when somebody is looking for a position within the district. So it's important that we provide that face of the district.
One of the questions I had was that we had a lot of concerns, a lot of concern from the staff, that in certain situations, not getting interviewed, because that's up to the, that's up to the individual that's hiring, whether it's a department or a campus. But one of the issues was that, in some cases, administration never even received the applicant list from the HR department. So I know that there are software programs out there that other districts use that give the individual that's hiring real-time views as far as who's applying. Okay, and then do we have that system in place, or is that something?
That is what we are working towards, Mr. De La Santos. But again, from what we can understand in the very initial phases, we think the ALIO system can provide that for us. And the goal is, is that our, whoever, if it's in a department, if it's on a campus, that they can see the candidates, but then also which candidates have reached the threshold of they are eligible to interview, right? They've been vetted through, so then we don't have to go through any of the other processes where we continue. They know who's vetted, who's ready for the process.
And you'll find that under goal three in your plan, you'll find the strategies and the activities specifically addressing that concern.
Oh, thank you. I had.
Go ahead, Mr. Three.
Go ahead, Mr. Three.
I had very similar, I don't know if Jackie was looking at my notes here, but it's along the same lines. You know, and you guys answered it, and I know you guys are, you know, here we are, start at the beginning of the year, and you were, you're taking on this challenge, and it is a challenge. And it's going to be, it's not going to be something that's going to be fixed over. This is 10 years of manipulating of just every word you can use out there to describe this department. So you guys will have a big task in hand, and we want you guys to know that you have our support.
Thank you.
And, you know, customer service, I experienced some negativity, obviously, when, during, when I was applying here at Wesaco. There was a stall tactic. I don't know if it was on purpose or not, but I didn't sign my contract until August, or excuse me, July 20 something. But I had resigned my previous job in May, in May 31st. So, you know, I didn't have a job, but I knew something would pan out. But those are just examples, and I'm sure we're going to get more and more, Ms. Anger, out here. We're going to get more and more examples. And I think we need to listen to those examples and take them to heart, because a lot of people were affected by this lack of whatever we want to call this. So, you know, so one word that I would like for us to add there to the building relationships is building positive relationships. You know, I think that goes a long way with everybody. But now, I think Jackie covered that and Mark covered some other things, so thank you, guys.
I think the word we'd like to use is trust.
Yes. There is a big lack of trust right now.
All right, and it's a good plan, and I like that you're going to provide professional development, not only for your department, but hopefully for administrators, so that way they follow what needs to be followed. And then, of course, the annual employee evaluation is very important. And of course, we have to streamline them online, so that way you get away from paper, like you were mentioning. And I think these two individuals, I've known them for quite a while, their customer service, people friendly, both of them. I've had the opportunity to work with them and talk to them in the past, and I believe they'll do an awesome job.
Thank you.
I had one thing that I also wanted to mention as well, too, and I know we've discussed it amongst the board as well, is that I think that courtesy interviews is something that they, you know, board members have sometimes been used to in the past. I personally, working in the educational field, I've never had that happen to me, not once. But I know it's happened here, and I know it maybe happens in other districts. But I feel that when that's done, it kind of puts the administrator that's in charge of the department or campus in a very difficult situation. I don't believe in courtesy interviews. Like I said, I've never had the experience myself, and I'm pretty sure administration doesn't like it either, because it puts them in a position where they're getting calls from multiple members in regards to a certain candidate. And at that point, that causes influence in the hiring process, and it affects the validity of the hiring process. So is that something that we can already talk about publicly here, that we won't be doing that?
I think coming from our department, coming as somebody just coming off the campus, that would be appreciated. And again, it goes back to earning trust.
Yes.
Those that are being interviewed have earned the interview, and they're worthy of our community and our students.
And if you look at, again, on your plan, goal two, our first strategy there, it speaks directly to refining that interview process and providing that framework, and then training district supervisors, directors, principals in what that framework looks like and how they will follow the interview process, how they will review those vetted applicants and select those that fit the profile of what they're looking for. So that's specifically addressed in the plan as well.
And I think one thing that needs to be noted, in the last few months, we've really worked as a district to refine some of our interview processes, to try to standardize them. But now we want to standardize them across the entire district. So just I'll give you just a brief example of the way we see this. If we're going to be interviewing for instructional facilitators, it should look the same across all 10 elementary campuses, all four elementary campuses, and across our high schools. Same process, so everybody's going through the same type. That way, we can, again, refine, and again, it's transparent. And transparency is going to start to bring back trust.
And I just, I want to be very clear with the community, because there's been a lot of opinions out there. A lot of the HR report has to do with the school board, you know, to say, oh, it's everybody else. It has a lot to do with the decisions made up here. And I want to let the community know that as far as myself, and I'm sure all of us up here, want the best qualified candidates. So if micromanagement is called, hiring the best candidates and saying no to the candidates who don't have the qualifications, and it's going to happen. We're looking for the best qualified candidates. So I want to make sure that the community knows that, and it is a culture. I've been talking to several people, and the culture around here is the school board picks them, the school board picks them. And we need to stop thinking like that, because like you said, this is a whole new system and process. And please understand that the school board is going to go with the recommendations of the interview committees, and they're going to be the best qualified people. Okay, I just want to make sure that we understand that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Mr. Three, want to tell us any questions?
No. I wish you guys the best. I know you all are going to do an awesome job.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and I know you all are the right choice for this position, for these positions here, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do want to point something out. I know back in, I believe it was 2013, there was a TASB report that, or they had already been sought out to do an evaluation, you know, for, I don't know if it was just compensation plan or if it was for, for, for everything that we just went through.
Yes.
But that's all that happened, and nothing was ever implemented, nothing was ever followed through, nobody ever did anything with it. So I know, obviously, our expectations and from everything that we've experienced here recently, I know that will not happen here with this new TASB report.
I can tell you, Dr. Valdez met with us right away on Wednesday morning, and it was mentioned. It was mentioned.
So along the lines with, I'm just going to reiterate on what Jackie, on those job clarifications. There's individuals out there that were hired unqualified, were given, were given a year, three years, 10 years to get qualified, and then properly, or and then compensated after that. You know, that's, again, for current and future positions, if we can really look very closely at those job descriptions. And obviously striving to always hire the best.
Will do, Coach.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
We'll move on to item five, presentation discussion of corrective action plan for the Business and Operations Department in response to the forensic audit findings and recommendations. Dr. Valdez?
Dr. Rodriguez, trustees and members of the audience, this is to acknowledge, again, the, another corrective action plan that we're already moving forward, demonstrating to the public and demonstrating to, you know, the board. You'll always hear me say that great classrooms begin with great boardrooms. And so we've already started the work, right? It's moving forward. And now we have the business and finance team up here. They're going to present to you some of the initiatives or strategies that we're going to use based on the audit final findings and recommendations from Report of Investigation Number Two, Payments to Vendors and Contractors. Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you, Dr. Valdez. After Rodriguez, members of the board, we prepared a report with answers to the recommendations forensic officers gave us. They had nine recommendations for our report. I know there's a lot of other comments that were made throughout the report. We did not have answers for everything. We have a couple of notes extra to provide. We will provide in another report. We need more time to work on that one. But what we're going to do right now is provide answers to the recommendations they gave us. So I will start with the next page on page one of recommendation one. Where they said, "District expenditures for awards and incentives during the fiscal year 2015 through 2020 were approximately 4.9 million, the majority of which was spent on t-shirts and apparel for students and staff. We recommend that the district review the budget for awards and incentives to ensure the use of funds is aligned with the district's goals and objectives." The answer that I, we put in is an action that has already taken place, and it has been mentioned to the board already, is that we set up a $25 limit for any and all purchases of incentives for staff per semester. We will be looking at scenarios where an employee works in multiple campuses, or is it a department employee that works at a school? They can only receive $25 per semester of employee incentives. That could mean $50 for the year. They cannot get an incentive from every school they work at or from a school in their department. The awards that are given to us to staff members, especially teachers at schools, are for the hard work and as a motivational item, to reward them for the hard work they put in throughout the year. And the incentives for students are also for the hard work they provide throughout the year, every semester. And the cost of awards for students that we have provided in the past, it used to be $10, $11, and $12 for elementary, middle school, and high school students. And in the last two or three years, because of reduction on ADA and budget and everything else, we cut the numbers to $8 for elementary, $9 for middle school, $10 for high school. And sometimes they're getting incentives as well on the fall and also on the spring. But those are the costs that we provide for them. We have mentioned in the past that the amount that we provide to students was provided after the budget was adopted. Sometimes we had money in the budget and what we call the contingency accounts. Sometimes we didn't have it. So we would discuss the item with our superintendent, and then if we had the money, we released it. And we did it in October, sometimes we did it in November. And if we didn't, then we came back to the board for the board to consider taking the money from financial balance who wasn't enough money in the budget to allocate it. I'm going to mention this, I already mentioned the use of funds allied to district goals and objectives. We did a report on the local maintenance fund on function 11, which is instruction. And we looked at non-payroll items. We have a total for contracted services, which is the 6,200 for consultants and other items that we have. The total spent for all those years is 4.8 million for 6,300, which is supplies and other items. Oh, let me go back. On the 6,200, I said consultants, it also includes online licenses for students. We have a lot of things that we buy for students to learn there online, even before the pandemic hit. So a lot of the items that we have in 6,200 are because of that. Also support for our softwares or maintenances that we have, all the programs we have for maintenance, we have support. And it used to be coded to 6,219. For supplies, we spent 8.2 million, again, instructional, for the local maintenance fund. For other operational items without incentives, it's 1.4 million. In capital outlay, which is equipment, furniture, 180,000. These are the amounts spent on those six years that were audited.
Where are you at on this one right now?
It's not in there. It's a note that I put. I said, I had a couple of the notes that are not listed there. And I will provide more details to you all, so you can see it.
Yes, because if you're just reading off numbers and it's not making any sense to me.
I understand. I want to move on to recommendation two.
Now, before we go on.
Sure.
Now, now, since we're cracking down on incentive spending, what is the proposed budget amount before it was set at 500,000? So what are we looking at now?
I don't remember that amount, but I can provide it to you later. Well, what we told the campuses and departments is to provide the amount they wanted to spend for the year so the board could approve it.
So here's what I'm getting at. So if we're sitting here, we're saying 10, 11, 12, 8, 9, $10, and $25. we're saying 10, 11, 12, 8, 9, $10, and $25. So we don't know what all that's going to accumulate to. I mean, I know it's, 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 it may be harder to determine, but at least have a ballpark idea, because I know there's a lot of events, a lot of things going on, but if we're still limiting per student or whatever, we don't have a ballpark figure for that?
Yeah, I don't have it to provide to you at this time.
But it also encompasses the, the end of the year awards with, whether it be medals, trophies, certificates, all of that.
Award jacket for athletes.
We'd have to pull that data from, from your office and provide that in the board update, so that way we can even study the historical trend and how much has been going towards all those awards. I mean, there's, you know, that's a lot of, I mean, if we have close to 16,000 students and you're talking about awards from kinder graduation on up.
That's why, I don't know, taking these numbers like this, I don't know if it's more beneficial to say, you know what, instead of, instead of aiming to spend 500,000, let's go ahead and go 300,000 and work backwards. And that way we can divide up per student, per employee, per whatever we're going to spend. But doing it this way, I think it still leaves us open for open spending.
Correct, Coach. And I agree, and I, but just initially here, we can conclude that if we're going to cut down on spending on t-shirts and apparel for students and staff significantly, we should see a significant decrease in that, in that type of spending.
Because the $25 allotment you're giving per staff member, that's for staff member.
Correct.
Twice. And it's per semester, so that's $50. We have about 2,300 staff members, that's already over 100,000.
Yes.
So that's, that's just alone, an incentive for staff. And I think that's why Mr. DeReneal is bringing up the question as far as what's the total. I understand that ribbons, awards, trophies, etc., that's allowed. That's, that's in the Texas code. I mean, that's allowed as far as expenditures you can do for students for motivation. My question is just, where is the documentation that you found that we could spend over $100,000 on staff? That it's not, that it doesn't fall under gifting, and the gifting of taxpayer dollars?
Oh, for apparel?
Yeah, well. Because, and the only reason I say this, I'm sorry, sir, is that most districts, when they get audited by TEA, they stop buying apparel. And there's a district out there that you can easily contact, and they know, because they're told that they can't. So I want you to know, I've been asking about this since we brought it up since 2020 in December, is where exactly did you find that it says that it's okay? Because I don't understand why districts that have been audited, they stopped buying apparel, and yet we somehow are still doing it. And I know it's kind of out of 199 funds, but those are, those are residential taxes, you know, those funds. So I just want to make sure that we're in compliance. And if we can see the documentation where that's found and allowed.
Well, one of the items, like I had mentioned before as well, is the $25 amount. That is, the IRS has called the minimum rule, the $25 that can be provided as an incentive. If something is provided for higher amount, it should be, it could be added to the employee's W-2 as additional compensation, which is something we haven't done and no district has done it like that. In the situations where we spend more, we used to spend whenever we had the apparel, the shirts for the campus, especially when we were recognized school district, anybody wanted to have it, all the stars, they wanted to have them on their shirt. We always did it whenever they got the recognition. And those shirts cost $35. And whenever schools would try to go to a higher amount, we always kept them at least 35. And we've done that for a while, several years. We used to pay a little bit more. But we kept them at 35. But then we started, Mr. Garcia, by Garcia, purchasing director, and I, looking into that. So we changed it to 25.
Now, and the only reason I'm asking, sir, is just that, because that's kind of where I'm kind of, I guess, confused. Where does, so IRS policy and guidelines dictate local tax dollars revenue? How that's spent for school district revenue?
No, 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 no. It's a guide that I said that as a minimum, an amount that is used. And a lot of districts use it. Now, when they do incentives, they limit it to $25.
But in regards to students, yeah, because I've seen the incentives for kids, but that's my question. I keep hinting on where school districts get audited by TA, they stop buying apparel for staff, because it's considered gifting, but yet we haven't seen anything yet that shows us that we can here, other than that, that you're noting, but. Like what I'm trying to say, maybe you can call like maybe some of your peers and say, okay, why did you all stop doing it? Because I know other districts that have stopped doing it.
Okay.
And so what was it that triggered them to stop? Something in that TA audit made them stop? And that's kind of my worry, my question, because, and this isn't to you, but just because something's done for a long time doesn't make it right. And you know, you can do the wrong thing for a long time, it doesn't make it right. So something has triggered them to stop, and that's kind of why I'm trying to get the answer for, okay, what are we doing or where did we find it that is allowed?
So is it allowable?
Yeah, I'll provide information to the board.
We'll research that. Thank you.
Okay. On recommendation number two, it says, "While the board implemented controls for awards and incentive purchases in 2017, we required quotes from multiple vendors for purchases over 3,000. In recent years, the business office has provided authorization to the campuses to purchase holiday incentives where they're obtaining multiple quotes due to the short time window from the time funds added to the campus budget. We recommend that the district plan ahead for budgeting of holiday incentive funds to ensure that campuses are able to obtain competitive quotes from multiple vendors." I just, I'm going to provide, read the action plan that we have, to mention that the auditor's mentioned here that the board implemented controls, but that's not necessarily correct. The board approved the agenda that we presented. Business office set up the limit of the 3,000 on the quotes. And I mentioned before, we used to have a limit of 500. But we used to get complaints from principals, departments, the board, when they found out, well, somebody says that purchase orders are taking too long, to we raise the limits, to get close to 3,000. So when we did the agenda, like we do with others, we said, it's going to be 3,000, we need to get three quotes from the approved vendors. So that's something that we provided, the board approved the agenda, because the forensic audit recommendation makes it look like the board approves some controls that we were not following, makes it look even worse. I want to say it's not, it's not that way. We did not get the three quote that is correct, and that is not, it's true, it's not correct, but it's something that, it was not a control established by the board that we violated or something like that. On the action plan for the 2021, 22 fiscal year budget, administration will provide the budget for student incentives to the schools after the end of the first six weeks period to find out the enrollment figure at the time. For future years, if funds are available at the time of the budget preparation, an amount will be added to the initial budget allocation to the schools and will be earmarked for first semester student incentives. This process should allow for schools to have ample time to get the required three quotes from various vendors for the student incentive item needed. Any comments, questions?
I do. I have a comment. I know, I know what you stated as far as not circumventing, but I think if you look at the report, you look at the budget, it was, it was always budgeted every single year, 500 to 600,000, and then all of a sudden we were spending 800,000 to 900,000, a significant increase in what was budgeted. And if you look specifically at the holiday spending, that money was allocated to campuses, but usually close to the 11th hour, as far as turnaround time.
Right, yes.
And so if you're doing it year after year, why wouldn't you look at it and say, okay, we already spent 800,000 to 900,000, let's put that from the very beginning? And number two, why not already give the campuses that those funds ahead of time so that they can have more time and more options to, you know, to look into and get bids and whatnot, rather than dropping it on them at the 11th hour and spending? Because for instance, December 2020, that was something one of the other trustees brought up, that 100, I think, it was over $100,000 was spent during that time, but we didn't have kids on campus.
$130,000.
And I think that there was accusations of boxes or supplies that were stockpiled at certain campuses, or the case may be. Those are accusations, I don't know if it's true or not, but, but that was done in December of 2020 with hardly less than 10% of students on campus. And so when you look at those type of things, I think that's why you see that. There's a, there's a repetitive history of underbudgeting, and then distributing funds at the 11th hour, then giving them a bypass by saying, you don't have to get quotes, move forward and move ahead. And, and that kind of puts, that's where that perception comes from, because it's done year after year after year and right on time. So that's, that shows that that's a process there.
Yeah, yeah, we need to figure that process. You are absolutely correct. I want to mention for the 2020 year, we were under the pandemic, because the budget we adopted was very tight, very strict. We were not sure we were going to have the ADA for attendance for the kids, the tax collections and everything. We had frozen the travel, which we have frozen travel anyway. The money for travel, we had told schools, to the department, you cannot transfer it, budget transfer to anywhere else. It has to stay in travel. And incentives were also frozen, so we're not going to use them. Mrs. Peterson, Mr. Aguilar, and Dr. Canales and I met, and from the perspective of the schools, we know, we like to provide something to our teachers that are working so hard and the pandemic, and you can see how they're working. You said the kids are not in school, they were online. It was very difficult, and you can talk to any teacher, they'll tell you the same thing even better than I can. So all the effort that the teachers are putting in doing school online and the kids, we like to reward them with something. Okay, we release them with the money that you have on hold. So it's okay, we decided on it. And we did, that is why the fund were released even later than all the times. That is the explanation for the very late release of funds for that year. If I wasn't going to release it, depending how things are, we'll do it for the second semester. But then when they approached us and asked about it, we all agreed that we would release it, and it was released and it was late. And when it was like that, when we're trying to get something for the schools, we do three quotes, we're not going to get it all very late. That is why we made the change not to favor a vendor, which might apply like that could be based upon what the order that we tried to do on purpose, or facilitate the purchasing like that. That was not the intention, we just did it wrong.
I know you, I mean, you, you're going around and not to favor a vendor and stuff, but that's what was happening, and that's what came out on the audit report. So I, I don't, I don't want us voicing things out there that are, that are going to, 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 to change or just, that's what was happening, and it is what it is.
Yes.
And so I don't want us not to favor, yes, no, it was to favor a particular vendor, not for just one year, for the last four, five, six years that the report was done on. So that's what we want to correct here.
Right.
And, you know, that's what we want to correct.
I understand.
Right, though, right, you're correct, Coach. The only thing is that in the system and the process, then we would have to then streamline the process, because a lot of this is campus-based purchases. It's not district, it's not at the district level. It's principals selecting, it's principals choosing who, you know, whether it's trophies, whether it's shirts for students, whether it's, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Sanchez, but I was a former principal here, and, and we picked whoever we wanted. We have a former principal here too.
Yes, Dr. That, you are correct.
So, so then we'd have to come up with a system on how we control the selection of the vendors at the campus level. And so that really takes the autonomy away from the campus leader. So that's something that, a discussion that, that executive leadership is going to have to address, right?
Going forward, yes.
Yes, going forward, because it's how, then how do we do that, right? If that's the campus principal and the faculty and staff's preference, how, how do we do that without?
Going forward, yes.
Yeah.
But, you know, we, we had going forward with that. But it, it was known out there in the community, and the facts are there, that everything was still funneled to one company. So even regardless if, if that was a recommendation or choice or not, I think it was encouraged in many times to go with that company. So we're not giving them a open, so that's why now with, with having quotes, setting quotes now, I think that'll be the first way. If they can all offer the same product, you know, just, that's what quotes are intended to do.
Correct, absolutely, and we agree on that part.
Implement that system.
Right, but it's, it's the ultimate, like, for me, it's what's the recommendation of the campus principal.
Then we're going to go back, then we'll be in the same place five years from now, if that's what we're going to do.
That's what we're trying to, that's what we're trying to rectify, right? To mitigate, like, how do we, how do we do that? So that's something, that's a solution that we have to come up with.
Part of it is what we, we provided our recommendation to lower the limit of 3,000 to 500.
Correct.
And then the board changed it to 300. So now that should improve a lot, because they're going to get quotes for, it needs to be more than, more than anything.
That system that should help.
More than 300, so they'll have to get at least three quotes.
And then if I may, I, I'd like to, because Mr. DeLo Santos, you brought up a good point on why not already give it to them? Okay, so I have some institutional knowledge, and I, and we do have former campus principals here, and in some campus principals that, you know, think back about how this started, right? It's never been a holiday incentive, never was it a holiday incentive. It was an, an attempt to improve ADA, our average daily attendance. Our former superintendent at the time kept monitored attendance closely. Weekly, we would receive reports from our campus with a comment that would say, great, outstanding, fair, poor. Correct me if I'm wrong. So then it all came down whether each level pretty much met the, the standard, the percentage, whether we, the elementaries met the 96% attendance rate, whether the high schools met the, middle schools met the 95% attendance rate, whether the elementary, the high schools met the 94% average daily attendant rate. It was all done as an incentive to improve ADA, our attendance of children attending our schools. It was never a holiday incentive. It just happened that if you meet the first semester goal, go for it. We did it, we did it as a district, we're in this together. ADA improved, which brought, which meant money for us, right? Increased monies. So because it was that, administration could not say, oh, already in the first six weeks, we're just finishing the first six weeks, here's the money, you, you know. So it's really, it's really a tool for, for motivation. I don't know if in the last years it has changed to something like that, I'm not sure, but that's how, that's how, that's what it was. Correct me if I'm wrong, those of you that were, that are here in the audience as far as the inception of this incentive, student incentive. It's not a holiday incentive, it's a student incentive.
And one of my things is, in the previous meeting, yes, that was discussed, that on the origins, on how this initiative started. And of course, it's a positive initiative. My main concern is, one, especially with staff, I understand students, there is, in Texas educational law, it just, it does designate ribbons, trophies, and plaques, etc., and other type of, other type of awards you can get to students. My main concern was just us buying personnel, staff, t-shirts, umbrellas, jackets, hats, cups, and gifting it to them. And are we within compliance? That's the main concern. And second, was just the fact that when you're spending more on incentives and you're spending on instructional resources, because there's a, there's a huge outcry from, from staff saying that they don't have the adequate resources, even today. There's, there's, there's campus, have we surveyed campus admin, campus staff to make sure that they do have all their resources? Are we making sure that they're not splitting up kits? And that they don't have enough class kits and whatnot, or grade level kits to be spread apart? Because I've gotten those concerns, we still don't have that, that there's, they're lacking adequate supplies. So that's kind of what's something that I've been pushing, is compliance. And two, are we actually, are we making sure that our classrooms or our campuses are resourced properly before we go and then indulge in spending in other areas? Because that should be our primary focus first. Campuses, classrooms first, departments that supplement that, and then everyone else is secondary. Because our, our business is academics, okay? It's student excellence. So that's kind of what has been my thing. And when you're telling me you're spending 800,000 to 900,000, and not you, man, but the administration previously, 800,000 to 900,000 a year versus instructional resources at 600,000, you got a big problem.
Correct.
And that's, that's kind of my push, and that's kind of, that's my main point and message in regards to this, you know.
And as we sit here, I don't want to be here three years later and, and they tell us, hey, you guys did this. As the board, we trust you to, to observe and monitor what's going on, right? Like it's trust, but verify, trust, but verify, make sure that, I trust you, but are you doing it correctly? And I feel like maybe a couple of years ago, everybody would say, yeah, go ahead, approve it, yeah, give the kids the award, thinking, yeah, I mean, Andres will tell us if something's wrong, you know, and come to see now, uh-oh, yeah, it wasn't what we thought. So just, if somebody places the trust in you as an administrator, I guess right now I can say it's, it's lost for me, seeing all this. I hope that we can build it up again with all these goals and, and the recommendations. But it just, like Mr. DeLo Santos emphasized, instruction. I know there's some teachers that was the coes, social studies, to be exact, said, hey, there's a lot of kids for like very little teachers. We've saved the district millions over the years, and, you know, the staffing, the staffing, and that's a huge problem right now, that, yeah, we need to address a lot of things, so.
I guess my, my concern is, is the accusation of, you know, Mr. Sanchez funneling money to a particular vendor, when we know that there's multiple decision makers, you know, when it comes to which vendors are being used. And, and, you know, I think that's, you know, harmful to Mr. Sanchez and his reputation, you know? And he's done great work, and, and I think, you know, that's, that's something that, you know, there, it was, ultimately wasn't his single decision.
it was, ultimately wasn't his single decision to, or, or there was no fi- findings in that audit where he instructed any principal or department to use a particular vendor. So, you know, I, I, you know, that's where I think, you know, we need to be careful.
I'm not accusing you.
Yeah, no.
Who's responsible for that department? Who, who signs the checks? Who's responsible for the department? Okay.
But, but, but he comes off based off of board approval.
Yes.
So he's responsible.
But, but I'm not saying you're funneling money because you're not buying the stuff.
No.
So I never said you're buying the stuff. But I said, there's funneling occurring. But I never said Andres. I said, there's funneling occurring that, that method is occurring.
I think it's been insinuated there.
And I think, Doctor Valdez.
It's not, it's not insin- insinuated if it's in the, in the report.
Coach, I think, Coach, if you look at it, you yourself as a business owner and, and what you do, if you offer a good price and a timely service and, and you're doing a fantastic job, then you would think that you're gonna get majority of the business. At the end of the day, it's up to the principals to decide who that vendor is.
How, but this is not a private company, this is a government-owned school and there are laws to abide by.
I understand, but they're the employees, that's their budget, Ms. Jackie. That's, that's all I'm saying, it's, it's their decision. For, for y'all to, to go on a limb to say it's funneling. I mean, go and ask your principal because that's what the Weaver did. And he said, every principal said, they chose their own vendors.
All right, I, I think, I think they're on.
What we can do now is, is move forward. We made, you know, in the last meeting about, hey, three hundred dollars, you know, let's get the two quotes.
Right.
Anything above will get the three quotes and we just move forward. That's all.
And I think Doctor Valdez mentioned being a former principal. I, nobody ever told me to go where in broader express. The committee, the committee that I had, the SPDM committee, would decide, okay, what are we gonna purchase for students this year or for staff? Now, honors, trophies and all that came in another function. But the principals with the committee decide what they're gonna purchase. And if you, if you have a company that's gonna deliver on time, then the price is competitive and you have the, the code, and then it's a good product, you're gonna go with that product. It just, this is the way it is. And, I mean, you got some principals here that can tell you how they do spend their money on awards and incentives. If they put it in the correct function, one nine nine eleven sixty-four eighty-seven for students or one nine nine twenty-three sixty-four ninety-seven for staff. If they put that money in there, then they can use it just for that.
And for me, that's fine, but the, my problem is there's a budget and then there's an actual what you spent. And we went over by way too much. So where's the supervision, where's the monitoring, where is the, I am in charge, let me look over this? Because I'm trusting that, I don't want to be in trouble years later as a board member for making a decision. And it's gonna come to say, hey, well, you got, you guys approved and said it was okay. Well, I didn't know, you know, and that's what worries me, that there should be supervision, there should be monitoring of this. That's my concern.
And, and, you know, just piggybacking up from Mrs. Staita, there's a lot of controls that were in place. And when we look at the amount, kind of like what they're saying as far as what was budgeted versus what was spent, five hundred thousand to eight to nine hundred thousand, that's a, that's a lack of management and governance on all parties at that time. Because somebody should have called, called the question and said, hey, why are we exceeding our budget that we approved at the beginning of the year by, by so much? Especially in an area like incentives, I'd rather see that instruction. You wouldn't hear complaint from me in instructional resources. But teachers and things of that nature, that's an issue. So my message to you, sir, is that when, when we come to you, you play a very critical vital role in the district. Even in our last meeting, our last meeting, we're talking about coaching stipends. And then they were pushed through and they were approved. In some cases, you know, and, and one instance, you weren't even gonna be heard, you know? You were, you were gonna present, they said, well, let's just approve it, we, we'll, we'll find it out later. That to me is very irresponsible. And I, and I called the question and I said, no, I want to hear from you and let's hear what you have to say. Because you shouldn't tell us what we want to hear, you should tell us what we need to hear. Because in a situation where we just delivered and put on the, on the table whatever the board asked for, that could put us in a very difficult financial situation. And it could also jeopardize the, the livelihoods of many of our staff in case we run into a situation where we don't meet ADA. Currently, we're not at enrollment. These are all vital questions and it's our responsibility as a board not to just say, well, let's just ram it through and let's get it through because it sounds great. But let's actually verify and see, do we have the money to pay for it? Because then you're put in a difficult situation. So what I'm trying to say to you, sir, by my messages, tell us what we need to hear, not what we want to hear. Because that's, that's, that's what, that we totally fall back onto you because of the vital role that you play. And if it's a no, it's a no. I, I mean, I've been here too as well too, and where there's been discussions of adding additional positions and things like that, it was, it couldn't have been done, it couldn't be done. So it got dropped. And so we just have to hear that. And that's something that the administration, I don't know if that's their custom to, but that we're banking on them because the taxpayers are paying you all to be there day to day and make the right decisions. So you all need to come to the board, especially to you, sir, because you have a very important role because you, you, you're, you're monitoring the funds. It's, yes, it can happen, or I'm sorry, no, it can't. Because then we, then later on, other innocent people will be put into a critical situation because we mismanaged funds at the board level. So that's, that's why I'm saying we're depending on you and you're very vital. And I, and I, and I know, and I want to let you know, you have my full support. Anytime you say, no se puede, no se puede, like, it can't happen, it can't happen, and that's fine. And, and we'll support you hundred percent.
I appreciate the comments. And I pledge to the board that we will improve tremendously on our controls and recent budget purchases, procedures on what we're working on, which I'm just presenting on the recommendation, but there's more items mentioned, I'll provide more information to the board with that, that we will follow. And the recommendation number three said that we determined that the district had a fleet of eighty-seven school buses, including twenty-one spare buses, just twenty-four percent of the total fleet. While the main fleet of buses were all purchased in the last three years following the June twenty-eighteen flood, the district's twenty-one spare buses all range from fifteen to nineteen years of service, with fourteen of the twenty-one spare buses over two hundred thousand miles. We recommend that the board consider implementing a board policy for student bus fleet management with a framework for bus replacement as well as a target ratio for spare buses compared to the overall fleet. Well, how Mr. De La Rosa, filling on the action plan?
Good evening again, Doctor Valdez, Doctor Rodriguez, members of the board. So as you know, that one of the, I'll be presenting actually the next two slides. So one of the findings, of course, dealt with the buses and the twenty-one spare buses, whereas fourteen were reached over two hundred thousand miles. The recommendation was that the board adopt a policy to address these issues as far as fleet management, student management when it comes to transportation. So the recommendation that, or the action plan that we're recommending is adding a policy, a, a regulation to a policy C and B, which is transportation management regarding to district vehicles. So as you know, if you have a policy, you have the legal policy and you have the local policy. A regulation is actually additional language that kind of lays out the plan or the map of all the, the particular details of how we manage our fleet. So you will see in other, mainly municipalities and state agencies where they have a policy is that, okay, once a vehicle hits a hundred fifty thousand miles, you know, it goes to auction. So, and we had actually looked at this a couple of years ago, for whatever reason, I guess, other instances came up. So in checking from Brownsville, Los Fresnos, Harlingen, Mercedes, Donna, moving all the way up to La Jolla, there's not another district that has a regulation added to this policy. However, Austin ISD does have a very good regulations where they outline the entire aspect of their fleet management system from maintenance to student safety, to regular maintenance schedules. And that way it would be a TASB policy, so that way we'll have that opportunity to bring that policy to the board and review it and say, this is what we're gonna do, this is what we're gonna do moving forward with your support. And then actually the board will take action to pass adding that regulation to the actual policy. So I think that, you know, that alone will bring everything out in the open, that'll make everything transparent. That'll give, you know, everybody to basically saying, here's the policy, this is what we do, we need to replace a vehicle, what type of maintenance procedures we're gonna follow. We're gonna lay it out all on there. So again, one of the things that we can add to the regulation, and this is just an example, so we can say that vehicles will go to auction when they reach two hundred thousand miles. We're not gonna spend, we're not gonna repair a vehicle if the cost of the repair is actually greater than the actual cash value of the vehicle. So these things will have in policy, there's no questions, there's no one individual making a decision or, you know, a handful of individuals, it's gonna be policy, we have to follow just like any other legal or local policy. Again, so again, other recommendations we're making that we can even put in this policies as far as, you know, maintaining repair work for aesthetic purposes. So we can say that we're only doing aesthetic repair if it's absolutely necessary, it's resulted for damage or if, or an accident or it severely diminishes the operational functions or effectiveness of the vehicle. So another thing that's not listed here that we're, I met with Mr. Sanchez and Mr. Garcia a couple of days ago, we started bouncing around ideas, I haven't had a chance to actually go and meet with the staff yet. But for things like painting and stuff like that, I was gonna get with Mrs. Avila and find out, say, hey, can we use our Kates students to do work on some vehicles? That'll give them educational experience and it also, you know, gives us an opportunity to, to save funds. So that's the main objective or the main goal that we're gonna do to address this first concern.
Mr. De La Rosa, is there a way in our board update to maybe get that regulation plan that?
I will send it. And it's from, the one that I found is from Austin.
Already start taking a look at it?
Uh, the one that I found is Austin ISD and I'll send that to y'all in the update. But no other Valley District had that regulation in their policies, including us.
I, I had a question, sir, what year did you take, what, what year did transportation fall under you?
I'm gonna say mid to late twenty eighteen.
Twenty eighteen? Yes, you had a few years there. When you saw the report that the mileage, the, the repair cost versus the mileage on those buses was averaging almost about, in some cases, two hundred forty-seven or seventy-four dollars a mile, what is that, what did, what, what, what did, at that time, what does that tell you as far as?
It tells me that we need to start replacing our fleet. And not, you know, of course, we have to have these, as I mentioned earlier, we have to have these vehi-, we have to have these units running because they are spares. And we have to make sure that, you know, they're adequately, that they're safe for our students. Again, I'm not a mechanic, so I, I can't vouch for the validity of was this repair necessary? I can't. That would be, the director would need to come up and, and answer those questions. You know, I, I have to assume and trust our mechanics and our staff there. And I would like to say that we have awesome mechanics at the transportation department. We have an awesome shop foreman. If you go to the shop and you look at the money that our mechanics spend, because they buy their own tools, they spent a, 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 a big amount of their own funds because they take pride in their work. So that just gives me example, I'm gonna have to, I trust what they say. You know, and if it comes from the, the, you know, moves up the chain of command. So I'm not in a position to question the repairs, but what it does tell me, Mr. De Los Santos, is that we need to move forward aggressively with getting these old buses out of our fleet and replacing them with new buses on a scheduled basis. So that way we don't have twenty buses that are, you know, twenty years old and have two hundred thousand miles. And then all of a sudden, you know, we need to buy twenty buses because that's, you know, fiscally, you know, a, a pretty high bar to meet.
I've been hearing that the, I keep hearing the mechanics, that the mechanics, right? And, and so do you have a two-part question? Do you have documentation where the, where the mechanics were sending all these vehicles in or recommending or emailing that these vehicles need to go in? Is there any documentation or, or, you know, paper trail that we could see that shows that they requested all these repairs? And two, I'm, I'm gonna contact Weaver, but I know that they went and took photos of the buses and some of the buses in question that are called spares or ready to use had vegetation growing in them, bird's nest. And they took pictures of these and I want to get it from them so I can verify and have here, it's called, you know, somebody calls or wants to see it. But so in situations like that, those are huge red flags because I know they were saying that they're spare buses. I'm imagining a bus that's an older model, ready to go, ready to be turned on and taken at any time. But then when some of these buses that had this extensive repair work had vegetation or bird's nest in them, that shows me that there's a condition there that, that it wasn't ready to go or operable or ready to be used. So there, there's, there's, there's a question on supervision and then there's, and then there's a question there as far as to, was it really necessary for those expenses? And I keep hearing the mechanics and I don't want them to be put in a difficult situation because we've seen from the report that, that some people didn't have control over some of the actions that were taking place. And so I don't really want to, they weren't listed in there. But if, if it was them that re- that requested all these repairs, where's, where's the documentation? Where's the emails, the paperwork where they signed off and said, these buses need to go get fixed and be ready to go?
So when there is a purchase order that's generated, there is a process that's set up where, you know, the shop foreman has to present the request to the director. The line mechanic also has to sign off on that request. And then once that documentation is uploaded into Alio Scan and then I would check for it to make sure it was there and then I would approve the requisition.
Did you ever go and check the conditions of the buses or anything like that? Did you ever have eyes on the buses that, that were being repaired, descending for repairs?
Um, as far as actual day-to-day operations, no, sir. I mean, I have the director for that and, and his staff. So I do pop in, you know, and check out operations. And yes, I know there are a couple of buses that are inoperable, that are in that, you know, line or row, if you will. But, you know, as far as, you know, that day-to-day operations, unfortunately, I'm not that deep into the day-to-day operations. So again, that would be a question for the director to come up and, and answer.
And now that I'm going to feed off of what you're saying, right, now that you say about the director, we have in the exhibits that Weaver, Weaver gave us, they have organizational charts of our district along with hundreds of other districts. And, you know, you are in charge of insurance, I think that's kind of your main theme. Also, of course, the buses, transportation. But, you know, in my head, I'm thinking, well, the guy who knows about insurance, why in our organizational chart is he also worried about buses and insurance? And it just doesn't make sense. And, and that goes to show, you're not a mechanic, you're right. So these things are going to be swept under you without knowing maybe because you don't, there's a lack of knowledge there. It's like having a, a science teacher teach reading. I mean, I, I mean, you know, it just, it doesn't go. So that's also what I really want to look at is our organizational chart and what are we doing? Can you share how you?
Well, I do oversee risk management, so a, a lot of my position did involve, you know, going to the bus barn and evaluating accidents, evaluating operational procedures. Because it is, you, you can say risk management, you can tie a little bit into almost every aspect of, of this school. So I'm not gonna go into actually, you know, how I got there, but I was, that was, I guess, the prior superintendent, Dr. Canales, assigned that department to me.
Doesn't make sense.
So, so, so under risk management is, is where you go and see operational procedures and visit the bus barn and things like that, under that?
That, that's how I obtained my experience, yes, sir, and with the barn. But as far as like a, a day-to-day, do I go and make sure that a, that a, that a repair was completed? Well, no, I mean, that's the director's responsibility, that's the assistant director's responsibility.
And when you said about POs, I know there's a certain, I think, Mr. Trevino, you might be a little bit more knowledgeable about POs what you've been told about how they're broken down instead of splitting.
I, I, the POs, I think is a whole different discussion. I don't know if it's, if it's in here, further down the, the goals here. But before we jump to, to the POs, because I'm sure that topic will come up, you know, there, there's, Mr. De Los Santos brought up a great point there. And, and along with what Jackie's saying, you know, and, and Mr. Barmer, we, we really need to look at, I know we have an assistant to the director, to the director, to assistant to, we have so many titles and so many people in one department that things like this should not be overlooked. There's, there's, to me, there's no excuse. And again, I, I said it the other day and, and now we have two people responsible for this department. And, well, not two people, you're responsible, Mr. La Rosa, but then you're responsible for, for writing all the stuff that, all the checks that, that, all the expenditures that went through this department. So, and my question here is, the spare buses, we keep going in and I like the plan that, that, that you're talking about. How many buses are out en route? Do you know how many buses are out en route at one time during, like during the morning time? And then during the evening time during?
Um, I'm, this is an approximation, I'm gonna say about sixty-five.
Sixty-five, so more or less.
Yes. And I can get, I can get, I can get that data for you and put it in the update.
I would like that number. But that's, that's, you know, hopefully we can, what are we doing right now to control the spending at this moment, at this time?
I haven't seen any major purchases for repairs come through over the last, I'm estimating sixty to ninety days. The last major expenditure that, that was approved was a preventative maintenance program where they're gonna send the fleet out to get alignment, if you will. That's the last one that, that, that I recall that, that we approved, the preventative maintenance program. And again, that's one of the notes that I jotted down right here is next, in the future, when we do go out for a preventative maintenance program, get quotes for that or even maybe put out a separate RFP for, say, if we're gonna, if we're gonna align sixty, sixty-five, seventy units, let's put out a different quote for that, you know? And, you know, there's, there's companies that are around there, I'm not just talking about the one in question, but there's other, you know, companies that do that. So again, you know, working with Mr. Sanchez, Mr. Garcia and the staff, you know, formulating, this is what we came up with over the, over the last, you know, a couple of days. But I do believe that when we have this in policy, Coach, that you all approve it, I think it'll lead to a much more smoother operational standpoint. That way everything's out in the open, everything is defined and this won't happen, you know? We won't be subject to this type of issues again. We won't be subject to this type of issues again.
Well, uh, you did, I'm, I'm gonna go back to that audit report. You did at some point, I think it was in two thousand nineteen, you did bring, bring this to, to the HR director's attention about the spending that was going on. But we never followed through.
Well, it was, uh, again, a discussion that we had with Mr. Sanchez, uh, the director and Mr. Garcia. Um, we did bring that up and, uh, we did initiate some corrective action or some guidance, uh, to try to curtail that. Um, but at the end of the day, um, we, I have to rely on the people that are actually making the recommendations. So, uh, there, it, the, uh, the expenses were justified. And I'm not, you know, uh, accounting to the accuracy or the validity of it, but they were justified. So me as an administrator, I'm, I'm taking the word of the individual who's making the recommendation. So and again, Mr. Sanchez too, we're in that position. So we tried to, you know, to curtail these things and bring some attention to it on more than one occasion. And for a time it did, uh, the, the expenses did decrease. But I can't stand up here and say, you know, pointing fingers or, you know, anything like that. And I just, I go by the information that I get and the operational knowledge that I have. So it's not perfect. I understand that, Coach, but we're working to try and move forward and, and get to a better place.
Do you know, um, there was an, there was a situation where in the audit, and this isn't forbidden, but but in the audit, it discusses a situation where it was coming to the board so they could be awarded for the services contract. I think there was a, there was a portion in there where it was gonna come to the board. That vendor, uh, there was a certain vendor that wasn't on the list at the time. The administration at the time and the board, they decided to postpone that. And then it came back again and this time it had that, that vendor on there as well. At that point in time, when, when you, when the, uh, when the, and they, they list the directors being the one that initiated the push. That didn't send a red flag, especially since you already were concerned of costs. Like that wasn't a red flag anywhere saying, okay, you know, he, they didn't make the cut, they didn't submit, we move forward. But yet everybody allowed it to be postponed and then to come back. That right there and especially with the concern or red flags already about the expenditure, that at some point nobody kind of thought, okay, I mean, is that allowed? Is that something that they do when, or, or a cutoff is a cutoff? How does that work?
I believe, and probably Mr. Sanchez can give, uh, give a little more in-depth information to this, but I believe the recommendation was to reject the proposals. And the recommendation was made by the transportation director, you know, sent it up to the chain of command. So based on that recommendation, the proposals were rejected and it was gone on to repeat. And the justification is on the rationale of the agenda item. Basically, you know, we wanted to see more. And that's not uncommon. We've, we've, not me particularly, but I've seen items come to the board before where, you know, proposals are rejected because there's either not enough vendors or not enough qualified vendors for a variety of reasons. But that's the recommend, that was the recommendation made to the board. The board approved it and we moved forward.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to, the audit says they were rejected because they wanted another vendor who didn't come in on time. We don't do that. And I know since I've been here on the board and I asked, I think it was when, I don't remember if it was lawyers or somebody, we wanted more people to apply and they said, nope, it's too late, they can't supply anymore, it's closed, too bad they didn't make it on time. So to say that, oh, it was at the recommendation of the director, I've never known the directors to make the recommendations.
I'll, I'll go ahead and pull the agenda items.
Yeah, it's there. I know the audit. I've read it.
Uh, because again, the, the recommendation was to reject the proposal and go out to reject.
Yeah, it was.
And that happened, like, doesn't just happen, it happens across the board with any type of proposal. I've seen it many times happen.
But in this situation.
For, for, for a variety of reasons.
And in this situation, the way we were saying this because it has supporting documentation about a specific vendor. And I, you're right, they, they came up, they came up all the way to the top, it came to the board too, and it was, and it was rejected. And then they came back and they came back with just one additional company. And that's why it was in the audit because of the supporting documentation and emails that talked about that discussion uh, at the administrative level. Um, so that was my question, you know, that, that we need to look at certain things like that. I think a cutoff is a cutoff. And, and I mean, only in listen, certain dire emergency situation maybe to be looked at, but but those are red flags, you know, things that should be taken into and, and, and looked at to the report as well. That's what I'm just trying to say.
Another thing, I mean, I don't, I don't want to talk, but i- if I tell a, a bilingual teacher, a Spanish teacher, you're going to teach Spanish, but she doesn't know Spanish, would I hire her for that position? No, because she doesn't have the qualifications to know what she's doing. So what I'm saying is we don't know what we're doing, it looks like here. And to, as a matter of fact, they think the, the job grade even went from a two oh six to two oh seven, right, like, like last year? So it, it, why do things that we're not qualified for? And that's something that Weaver did say in his report. It said, we can't customize job, uh, descriptions or, or qual.
I'm sorry, Mr. Sanz, who's not, who's not qualified?
Qualifications as in mechanics or things that you, if you, if we don't know, if a Spanish teacher doesn't know Spanish, why would we hire that teacher for that job? So what I'm saying is something here is not working. So, yes, I know HR is going to work on it. But I know the people listening and that, that they've been talking, something's not right. And for us to just turn around and say, well, I don't know, I, it's, it must have just slipped under me. It just, it doesn't sound right.
No, nobody's saying that anything, you know, slipped under us. Saying there are, there are policies and procedures that were followed. And again, for this, uh, particular one in particular, uh, the proposal was rejected. And of course, not based on my recommendation, it was based on the transportation department's recommendation. But then again, I make recommendations to all the time. Uh, based on, on a variety of things, from insurance, from property and casualty to, from the, the, the range is very broad to school resource officers. Um, so again, uh, Mr. Sanchez has directors that work under him. I have directors that work under me and we take the recommendations of the, of the directors that we have under us. So um, was it, you know, does it smell? Yes, you know, but it was done properly and it was done legally. So there was nothing that was illegal or improper about this particular item.
Well, it may not be illegal, but is it right? Is that the right thing to do? A cutoff is a cutoff. We all meet deadlines, just like, uh, we all have, I submit for proposals all the single time. We all have deadlines. And for us to circumvent, because that's what we did here, we reopened it back up. So I wanna make sure that we have a system in place where that's not gonna be allowed anymore or we're not gonna propose magic numbers and then come back to find out, well, it was really thirty or forty, fifty, sixty thousand dollars more. So we wanna make sure we're not in the same position five years from now. Where there's magic numbers.
Can you, uh, on the update, can you put what an ASE certified mechanic? Charges per hour and to currently what we currently pay our mechanics, please?
Sure. Can do that.
So there, there is a break in our process. We are, the process is broken and that's why we're here and that's why we're, we wanna make sure all these things get looked at. Because I, I, that's not, if four people took the responsibility to submit the documentation on time and then they're the ones that are, that are magically scratched from the list and, and somebody else's, that's not proper business. And if that's what we're gonna do and that's what we're gonna say, well, that's a WIS, that's what we're gonna do? No, that's not right. Then we're gonna start getting a bunch of scrappy, uh, a bunch of people proposing to come and work over here at, uh, at, at W, at WISD because we're not holding anybody to any standard. So our process needs to be right. If not, we're not gonna have any top bidders, any top quality people come over here and bid.
And we are working through those processes, Coach. Uh, again, as I mentioned, I think this, uh, this legal, the, the regulations of the policy, I think is going to address a lot of the needs uh, and a lot of the issues that were brought up. And, you know, on that, I'll move on, you know, to the next slide as far as the recommendation of, uh, basically making changes to our procurement process when it comes to, uh, 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 getting quotes or going out for RFPs, you know, for repair services. Um, one of the instances or one of the issues that we ran into is of course, you know, the one vendor and of course the towing and the, uh, disassembly diagnostics. That's the issue that we had. So moving forward, again, with getting these, uh, making sure these vendors know and understand that, you know, we're going to obtain two or three, uh, quotes uh, from different vendors. So they will do that diagnostic and they are told upfront that, you know, that, uh, you're gonna have to do this diagnostic and if we charge the fee in advance for this diagnostic, okay, that's fine, okay. Because if you, a lot of times you take something, I'm talking to, you know, any, you know, outside mechanic, something that we can't do in-house, we'll have to take it. If they have to take the time to break down that engine and tell us what's wrong with it and then give us a quote and then they're gonna have to put that item back together and then send it to another company for another quote. So that's where it gets really, really tricky sometimes as far as uh, when it's, when it's a major, major overhaul that we have to do. But hence, moving forward and getting a policy in place where, hey, two hundred thousand miles, we're gonna take this bus to auction. You know, and we have a set plan. I think that should alleviate a lot of these issues that we're having, especially with the older fleet.
Just to answer, I think Andrew had mentioned about the mechanics and how much we pay. On one of the exhibits also, it talked about extra duty pay and overtime. And a lot of those, and I'm, those cars work hard, I know they do. Um, but a lot of them work with transportation. The hourly workers were overtime and it was a lot of extra duty pay. So I would just like to keep an eye on, you know, is, is it reliable and valid that they are really putting these hours in when they need to?
Well, our bus drivers, for example, we have a handful of them that know how to change the oil. So we do our own maintenance and we do our own maintenance for the entire fleet, not just the white fleet and the buses, but for maintenance vehicles, security vehicles. We do the preventative day-to-day maintenance there at the barn. So we have staff that, that changes oil, uh, changes cables, that does a lot of the preventative, you know, day-to-day maintenance. Uh, we have also drivers that specialize in, in, uh, replacing the, uh, the upholstery on the seat covers, uh, for the buses. And we have sewing machines there and we have the material and we replace, uh, that material on, on as needed. So as you know, you're riding the bus kits, you know, they'll ride on the, uh, on the seats, they'll tear them up. It just happens. It's normal, normal, uh, day-to-day use. But instead of taking that out to an upholstery shop outside, we have staff that's trained and know how to do that and know how to replace that. So we do save money there also. So yes, extra duty pay, there is that, but their, their services are valuable. And in the long run, it's more cost-effective to do that in-house than send it out.
Okay. One of the concerns from transportation employees were, hey, they're putting in extra hours, they're putting extra overtime, no one even told them to go and they're clocking in, they're punching in. So if we can keep an eye on, I, I don't know what, how you wanna manage that, but just keep an eye on that because that's a huge concern from a lot of employees about hours that, from people who aren't there or put in extra ones. So just to check up on that.
I had a question, sir. And picking back off of, uh, trustee Gonzalez here. How many licensed mechanics do you have for the fleet that we have? And do you think it's, it's adequate?
Well, we have two mechanics and they hold various certifications.
Well, how many, how many are licensed?
We don't, and I'm gonna have to double check on this, but I don't believe we have an actual ASE certified mechanic on staff.
And do we, and do you think that's appropriate for the size of fleet that we have and the responsibility of the transportation department?
I, I think it would be appropriate, yes, to look at that.
To hire, so.
To hire. So again, but going back to the compensation plan and adding that position. Uh, I do know another district that does everything in-house, you know, but then again, they went and hired, you know, AS, ASC diesel certified mechanics, they invested in the equipment, uh, that they, they spent a lot of money doing this. So when you do a cost benefit analysis, is it really worth it? Uh, but apparently this district thinks that, yes, it is because we don't have to mess or worry about, you know, the situation that we're in right now as far as, you know, what was brought up in the audit of one vendor getting it. So we can certainly do the research. It'll take a little bit of time. But we can do a little bit of research and find out, okay, how much would it cost to hire two ASE certified diesel mechanics? How much would it cost to install the proper lifts that we would need? How much would it cost to, you know, buy the diagnostic equipment? That, that we would need to be able to provide this a hundred percent. It, it, it's gonna be expensive. And then on top of that, we have a facility that floods. So we need to move that facility onto higher ground or drier ground. And then at that time, I think it'd be appropriate to, to look into, is this an investment that, that's, that's worth making in the long run?
Yeah, because I'm just saying, because it, it's a very big department you have there in transportation as far as supervisors and whatnot and everything, but it just struck me as as unique that we had all these, that personnel, but yet we didn't have a certified mechanic. So that's kind of something that I had brought up in the previous administration and.
And Mr. Los Santos, I'm gonna have to double check because I do believe that one mechanic has one certification, but I'd have to.
Yeah, there is one.
And I have to do a little digging and, and get that for you. But then again, there's different types of certifications, but I know that there's one that has at least one certification. And those are my two slides, if y'all.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move to recommendation five. And we recommend that the procurement department update the vendor monitoring process to include procedures that identify vendors with the same address as a district employee or board member. Following identification, the vendor should be communicated with to determine the issue and remove if determined to be inappropriate. Production plan, we will work with the technology department, we have communicated with them already, to create a program, process that will cross-reference and identify all vendor addresses or phone number that match employee records. Once identified, will be confirmed that all required documents and approvals are in place. For existing vendors that match this criteria, they will be inactivated in the financial management system, Alio, until an approval from the superintendent is obtained or from a committee that reads on this. For new vendors, they will be screened to determine whether they are owned by an employee of the district prior to including them as a vendor in Alio. Any questions coming?
No, I, I just think, uh, you know, we fall under this, under this, uh, I believe this is what we're, we're talking about here.
Yes.
Like my wife, she, she, but she's been providing service for the district before I was even here at this position. Now, we disclosed all that information.
Yes.
And, and, but I did receive a packet the other, and I brought it here with me because I wanna ask, so I need to fill out a whole another one?
It was a revision that we wanted to make on it.
Huh?
A revision that we wanted to make on it.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll go over that with you later on.
Okay. But so I brought it here with me, but, but, uh, no, I, it, we, I, I could care less if we put all her invoices or whatever uh, in the screen that we're gonna be as transparent as possible about this because we're, I mean, that's just who we, who we are. But I know she doesn't just service WIS, she services, I think she does a very minor for WISD.
Okay.
But I think that is something that we need to look at. With, um,
Yeah, once we get the first report, we'll, we'll share with the board. Before we take any action on anything.
Okay.
On recommendation six. In addition, procurement should also coordinate with information technology to determine what systematic processes exist to assist in identifying dormant, duplicate or incomplete vendors by flagging those vendors for further review during the annual evaluation. Additionally, procurement should explore system capabilities that would flag vendors in which the addresses match an employee address so they can be evaluated further. Our action plan, with the assistance of our technology department, we will use Alio intelligence to run reports on vendors that have not been used in over eighteen months. AI is Alio intelligence. It's a highly comprehensive report writing, writing tool specific to Alio. All vendors that are listed in the non-used vendor report will be placed as inactive. This will not allow any purchases from that vendor until we update the vendor profile, which includes various necessary documents, for example, a W nine form that in the IRS form that we asked them to fill out at the very beginning to set them up. That has their employee ID number, their address, so that we, we find out whether it's been any changes of the ownership of the company or with the company. Only after the receipt and review of these documents, we will reinstate them to be active. And again, I'll pick up somebody's going to need them at the department or school. Uh, continuation of that, there, an action already in place, a new vendor does not, does not get, uh, set up in Alio unless we have all the documentation required. Furthermore, the request for a new vendor setup must be signed by the campus principal or department director. We implemented this process over a year ago, but have strictly enforced it over the last several months. Prior to that, uh, we could have the secretary, a member of the department request a vendor. And we'll set it up. Now we change it to administrators only. Another action that's already in place, all required vendor forms are scanned into our system called, called Alio, Aliscan. They can be retrieved at any time for review. Updated forms are scanned, but the old forms are not deleted. This process has been utilized since two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen.
Mr. Sanchez, I was told, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Go ahead. I'm done.
Okay.
Finished.
I was told that, uh, in this Alio system, it's very complex, I'm assuming. Uh, I was told by people that, you know, that this, that there wasn't any documents being scanned into the system for a long time. Uh, I was told by people that, you know, that this, that there wasn't any documents being scanned into the system for a long time. And I know that HR also mentioned about ALEO, that they're gonna research, who's going to teach us, or you guys, how to find all the features in this software? Is, is it like a training or who's going to help us?
There's a consultant, consultant that we work with, they're from uh, Louisiana.
Okay.
Now, this company we know from, of them, since we uh, bought the system. The company, Whiting Hammer, which is the manufacturer of the company, submitted their bid, including the name of the consultants. Whenever we have issues, we need help with something, our technology department, our, uh, directors in the business office that work with ALEO heavily, contact them to clarify questions or to help us with anything. Any training like that, we will contact them. We'll have to pay them, but they will provide a, a start development on it.
Why haven't we done this before, though?
Well, the HR part was, HR department and they didn't move on it.
But at this time, we are backing up all our systems?
Are we?
Every, every, okay.
Everything's backed up, yes. And uh, we still need to start, uh, on the check, we haven't updated, uh, scanner checks. That's something that we're gonna be working on, but our purchasing, everything's uploaded, quotes, uh, requisitions, POs, it, it's in the system. That's why there are orders, we're able to, forensic orders, we're able to get the information.
Yeah.
We gave them access to value, so they went able to get in.
If, if we have the software, I mean, we should be using it, right? So it's a good thing to be educated on how to use it, definitely.
When the district first moved towards uh, switching to, into ALEO, it was for the business, the business side of, of operations. It was never the intent for anything else. It was basically switching over to ALEO for, on the business side.
Well, it, it, it did also have the option for human resources, technology, business and human resources, but it was more concentration, well, like you said, on the business of it.
The business side.
But it will help us if it's set up, because it will help us better when we're doing the budget for payroll and uh, HR to communicate through ALEO. That'll be able to help us better when we're trying to determine pay raises and items like that. It, uh, the ALEO, I understand, uh, HR item need to be set up in a certain way, so they're able to communicate well with payroll. So that's something that we're looking forward for. Payroll director to meet with a new HR administrators, or discuss this item and then get the consultant involved.
So it integrates the HR with the business. Okay, great.
So it was bought for the business part?
Correct.
But it was very heavily underused because, uh, correct?
Right.
So what are we doing, Mr. uh, Mr. Sanchez?
My name.
With the POs? I know we have a lot of P fifty something million dollars of, of un, of missing, not, not, no POs.
Not having a PO. Yeah, well, I, I didn't have a, I wrote some notes that are now listed. So I know you're not gonna read it because you're not there. But uh, I had mentioned before on the POs, usually a purchase order you're doing in advance. I mentioned to the board, the request for payments, that's when items were purchased without a purchase order, then they had to make a, a payment request. And we asked them, why didn't you do a purchase order? Well, I got the contract late, or the quote came in late. We needed the item right away, it was an emergency. So we kinda went with that. And that, that is who the PO is supposed to be, in advance, place the order, item get received. Most of them go to the warehouse and then get the invoice and pay it. Whenever we have something that we already have the invoice and they invoice it before the purchase order date, we say, well, we can have a PO like that, have to be before, PO before and then the invoice. Insurance, for example, we get the, the border proof, the insurance for the steering act insurance, property insurance, those are heavy amounts, the hundreds of thousands of dollars. If we get the invoice, we don't do a purchase order for it because we, we're gonna get the insurance and nothing to be received at the warehouse. So we just do a request for payment. That's the way we always done it. We have, and as we discussed it with Mr. uh, uh, customer, said the board approved the agenda item that he verified. He mentioned to the board that they, that it was checked like that. We do the request payment, we have a copy of the agenda item, the board approved, they invoice so that we know what it is. And in case of the insurance, Mr. La Rosa signs it. I look at it, don't go through me, don't go through the purchasing department, we get approval and we run the checks.
But I, I'm thinking as a, the business side, without a PO, I don't have a budget. I'm just, I'm going to use whatever I want. And that's what I saw in the report that we were going over, over, over on all the expenses that were budgeted for, because like you say, oh, well, I didn't budget it with a PO, they just gave me the invoice and who knows, it was five thousand over, but I paid it already. So it's part of a budget.
The, the budget exists. For the PO, that says aside a part of the budget for the purchase. That is the intended purpose. But when we have them, it's not because we don't have a budget, it's just we didn't do a PO. A lot of times that we talk to the department, they, it's getting better and we're gonna continue to enforce it, that they need to do the better planning for doing this stuff. Sometimes, oh, we're having a, a principal call meeting tomorrow, I need to avoid this thing at H V and try to get a purchase order rushed. And sometimes they don't get it, they go to H V anyway, get the stuff or somewhere else.
But what if my, my budget for my, you know, I set aside five hundred, but I went and bought something for a thousand? And then you're gonna say, oh, let me give you a PO, ooh, but I already.
Yeah, 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 good point.
But in most situations, you walk, but in most situations, you walk through, uh, in emergency situations, I need to, I'm doing a parental event, somebody dropped the ball, we didn't do the PO or for H V or where the case may be, you walk it through and you do the requisition, the purchase order, and then you get, and then you get the, the green light to, to go ahead and pick the card or do it, do whatever expense you're gonna do. I mean, you, you've even seen that in some cases, even here in the valley, it came on the news, you know, where people were making uh, purchases, well, purchase orders and they lost, they, they were terminated. You know, in some cases, of, of course, it was very large amounts, but in, in most districts, like I know in ours, if you, if you do do that, you're probably gonna get written up because you made the purchase without the purchase order. I mean, there's controls and rules and guidelines in place. So if it was being allowed by the business office in the past, it's something that we need to tighten up for, where people need to understand that, yeah, there's emergency situations, I get that, a hundred percent. But you walk it through and, and that's what they call walking it through, where you actually go, you make the call, phone calls you need to make to, to the suit, the business office, whatever the case may be, hey, I have to push this through. You get, it, it's a rush job and then they, they do it for you there and that way you can go ahead and purchase. I know I've done it many times. You do, you, you push through for the, you submit your requisition, then you follow through and have them, all, everybody, there's checks and balances, right? Everybody has to sign off on a PO. So all the important parties, you gotta call them, hey, I need to sign this off, check it, yes, check it, yes. And so that way they can get it through and get it cut that day. And you, and you still would stay within policy guidelines. What I'm trying, what I'm hearing is that you have situations where it was an emergency or last minute and it was allowed to go through. And, and that's, that's where that needs to be tightened up, you know?
Yes.
It's kind of like when we were talking, you know, I'm, we'll go ahead.
We have situations where we place orders for items and then the items aren't available. Athletics is one of them. So the substitute, so well, instead of this brand, we have this other one and the coaches need it because they wanna, for their games or whatever they have, they make the change. So we receive the items and then add in the purchase order, so I can't pay it, we doesn't pay it, because they don't match the PO. So then they send it to a request for payment, so I get those. So we, we're working with companies, say, if you're gonna make a change, and we told the, the athletic directors, yeah, sorry, the, uh, training coordinators, head coaches, uh, training, Mr. Garcia, help with them. Say, if you're gonna make a change on anything, before you make it, let us know. So you get a quote for the new item, do a purchase order and we cancel the old PO and you get a new one. That way the money goes back to your account, do a purchase order that matches what you're gonna buy. That way, when we receive it, goes to warehouse, agrees, pay it and everything's fine and it was the budget. But we don't do it, when they don't do it, that's when we end up with a request for payment. So we did have a lot of those payments in athletics as well. Uh, also when they go on meals, go to Amsterdam, they feed the kids at a restaurant and uh, there's not enough money in the account, the PO ran out, so we'll get another PO. So we're gonna work with them to make purchase order larger, like I said, for the whole semester. Instead of for a month, make a PO for the whole fall semester. And keep an eye on it and I spoke to the new athletic director secretary. When the PO starts getting low, make another one, so you don't go without it.
And I.
Otherwise, those become requests of payments and.
I'd like to reference the audit report and specifically what you are mentioning right now. And as I look at and I analyze the POs for vendor payments, eight point three million was for our benefits. Six point four million was for MP two energy Texas. Five point million, five million direct Magic Valley Electric Co-op. We're paying benefits, we're paying utilities. That's the chunk of this money, okay? So, so, Mr. Sanchez, my question, and it's to the city of Wesaco, it's to Verizon Wireless, North Alamo Water, Texas Gas Service Inc. So historically, these vendors were paid without a PO.
Yes.
Which is allowed. There's no wrongdoing. I'm just ma- on it, make it clear that it can be done, it's allowable. And if you look at those totals, that's the majority of the fifty-eight point million that is referenced in Weaver's report. So I want the public to understand that this is allowed, there's nothing wrong here. Is there another process that can be done to? So the optics are not that we're doing something inaccurate here. What process can we do to indicate? Maybe not, do we go through a PO, do we not go through, wha- what, what are we gonna do moving forwards? That way nobody questions the operations.
Well, I, I wanna be meeting, uh, meeting with all departments, Mr. Amerigo, Garza, end of the utilities. So they can do a purchase order, they have the budget, they know the estimated amount on the utility that we pay every month. I wanna do it for the attorney. Legal fees, the retainage, we have an AMPO because we know the exact amount. Legal fees vary every month, so we don't know. So what I'm gonna do is take an estimate of the, the month that we had, under eleven months remaining and make a purchase order.
Okay.
And I'm gonna give it to the vendors, I wanna keep it, but so when the invoice has come in, we have a purchase order for it. We'll do eighteen for Magic Valley, for everybody.
Perfect.
Insurance included. When the invoice comes in, I told Mr. Garcia, let's do a PO, even though after the fact, we're getting the invoice already, we did a purchase order for it. So we have documentation that it went through the PO process.
Perfect. And I understand there're gonna be circumstances where, where there is gonna be a request for payment afterwards and we should be documenting, whether it's campus-based. Because I know as a former principal, if services were rendered and I didn't have the PO and now it becomes a request for payment, uh, I would have to submit it in writing to business office that this occurred. And so I know that the business office does monitor that. And so we need to make sure that we are um, still adhering to those and, and applying those internal controls so that way that does not happen.
Go with, thank you.
Thank you.
I, and I understand what you're saying, doctor, and I know a lot of those purchases were board approved and, and it could be the sus- the, the, uh, uh, big amount, but what's gonna get us in trouble is that small amount for special ed title one, for special ed funds that were, you know, that we didn't have POs for, for those consultants.
Oh, let me go back. What page are you on, coach?
No, 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 I'm just speaking freely, you know, that, that, yes, you make a good point about the, the Verizon and about the.
Weaver mentioned that.
And, and the board and so forth. But what's gonna get us in trouble or it, it become a problem for us is when we're sitting here paying consultants, especially special ed funds, using special ed funds for that, and we don't have POs for that. That's what.
I agree.
Needs to be. I just wanted to make sure that, uh, yes, even though fifty-seven million dollars could have been accounted for, it's that one million dollars or even, even uh, young, fifty thousand, whatever amount it is, we still need POs for some of those.
And I communicated with the special ed department in that area.
Yes.
And that's all the department that will be, be talking to.
And I think Dr. Valdez, you can follow, Dr. Valdez.
Yes, sir.
You can follow up with, uh, have training for secretaries and, and principals on POs, even though a lot of them are uh, experienced, but still, you know, just to follow up to make sure that the POs are being followed, you know, uh, that's just something that you have to do.
A refresher, a refresher on that.
Yes.
Okay, recommendation number seven. We recommend that the procurement department develop a formal process to ensure consistent notification of solicitation to approve vendors. Procurement personnel should be trained on the process to ensure the appropriate vendors are notified, which can include those vendors with the same category code. Vendors previously utilized and or recommended by the end user. Action plan, already in place, the purchasing department maintains a bid list on the email system. This list is set up by category that correspond to our bids and proposals, for example, athletics, HTC filters, et cetera. We have utilized this process since two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. Another action already in place, all bids and proposals are assigned to a purchasing staff member called buyer. Each buyer maintains the bid folder and will also update a bid list from either the vendors that participated in the previous year or from new vendors wanting to be on the bid list. We have utilized this process since two thousand eight, two thousand nine. Another action already in place, all bidding proposals are posted on our website along with any other files, documents and drawings that are part of the solicitation. Occurring and awarded proposals are listed in our website under, and there's a link there, W I A D W S slash resources slash bids hyphen N hyphen proposals. We have utilized this process since around two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. The purchasing department is recommending the purchase of an electronic bid system. This system would give vendor the ability to directly access all bidding proposals and to electronically submit their bid proposal package. Furthermore, vendor will have the ability to revise their vendor information such as the contact name, mailing and remit to address, email address and phone number for purposes of receiving the, the, our request for proposals. We will explore the possibility of placing a twelve-month calendar listing, listing all of the proposals, starting and ending dates. This will help potential vendors plan accordingly if they are interested in any of them. The next one, recommendation eight. We recommend that the procurement department identify all the areas in which end user training should be provided by considering those every areas in which frequent questions or informal training is required to ensure procurement processes are followed. From the identification of training areas, procurement should design and implement a procurement training program for end users that covers those activities that are most common. The training program should consider on-demand training, in-person training or webinars. Specific training programs to consider include instructional procedures for budget availability, submitting requisitions, requisition approvals and purchase orders. Evaluating bids as part of the evaluation committee in a session that focuses on procurement ethics, responsibilities and expectations for the promised purchases. Also, the training program should be mandatory for those that routinely process purchase requisitions as part of the normal duties and completed at least annually. Action plan, already, action already in place. Over the last twelve-plus years, excluding the prior two years, we have conducted yearly purchasing training to staff. During this training, we cover a variety of areas directly related to purchasing. We will improve on this by having purchasing trainings throughout the year on specific topics instead of a cover-all training approach.
You're gonna give the trainings? Where are you gonna get those trainings?
Who doesn't? Mr. Garcia.
Mr. Garcia, Valdemar Garcia conducts the trainings annually.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we provide, uh, follow the, the law and mention the, the reference to the law that addresses the purchasing and he conducted training. I used to do it when I was purchasing director.
Okay, I thought it was like a third party, but we ourselves conduct our own trainings to our staff?
Yes, that's correct. Good evening. Yes, every year, we've been, like I put on here, for the past twelve-plus years, we've had a onsite live training over at our, uh, at our pack, what is it, the training center we have. And we invite all the staff, anybody associated with the, uh, with the purchasing. Uh, every year. The last couple of years, we didn't have it. Uh, two years ago, we had a, a missed uh, communication scheduling problem. And then it got pretty late in the year and we, we never, uh, ever, we didn't have it. Last year, of course, with the COVID, we didn't. As we started utilizing all the Google meets, uh, technology and abilities, then that's what we're gonna do. We, we've been talking about this for a while now, even before the forensic audit. What we wanna do is have smaller, uh, training on specific, uh, uh, purchasing si- uh, topics because, um, number one, we used to have it, it was like a four, five, six hour training, an all-day thing. The secretaries and campus personnel had to leave the campus and that was hard on the principals. Uh, and then the principals can't come and any other key personnel can't attend either because they had to be out a long time. So by having the, the shorter times on the, on these trainings, we can probably have everybody show up and, and on the, on video for a, a couple of hours at the most. And we hit specific topics, which we have already started to put together a list. And one of the things we've been wanting as well is to, uh, to videotape it and that way everybody can go in at any time. We hire somebody new or the, the principal wants to add a person to do ALEO purchasing requisitions, then they can reference the, the, uh, the video. And as a matter of fact, everybody who is new to purchasing and wants to use ALEO, we conduct a training in the business office, about a couple of hour trainings, one of my staff members shows them how to go in there and how to use it a, as best we can in two hours. Earlier, you were saying about you all training and getting, uh, to ALEO, we can do that. We can set up the training at any time. Uh, we haven't really, the past board members have really not asked for that. Maybe because they really shouldn't get in or don't want to get into that specific process, but. But if Doctor Valdez instructs us, we can, we can set it up. That's not a problem at all. It's really not that difficult to go in and see if you want to see specific vendors. What we purchased in the last month, last year, whatever you want, it's out there. It can be done. That's not a problem at all.
I just want our staff to know what the software, like you said, the trainings, it's great. So you said the word invite. Is it optional or is it mandatory where they need?
Well, that's the problem, and I'm glad you pointed that out. We always said it is optional. Because we didn't want to put the burden on the campus principals. For a few years now, for a long while now, I've been wanting to do it mandatory. But we never got to that point because again, you had to pull them out of the campus. But if you read the the recommendation, they're pretty much stressing to do it a mandatory. Which is exactly what I've been wanting to do for a long time. Because it forces the the staff to be aware of what changes have occurred and what policies we have in place. And to that I will add regarding the purchases without a P O. If you go to my manual, the very first page states do not buy without a P O. And when I start the training, that's the first thing I tell everybody, the very first, for everybody here or anybody who's attended, they'll tell you. That's the first, that's how I start the training. Do not buy unless you have a P O. Now, things will occur, obviously, that, you know, like we said, emergencies or situations will occur at the campus and at the apartment. But we don't advocate for it. We don't tell them it's okay to do that. As a matter of fact, I want to point to Abel. Abel, how many times did I argue with you and go at get on you for that? I think Abel, Abel, Abel initiated a plan. In his in his campus to zero, zero tolerance. He stopped at zero percent. No P Os, I mean, no purchases without a P O. You can ask any of the camp, any of the principals here or anytime you run into them. Ask them how many times I questioned them, how many times I allowed them to buy without a P O. Guaranteed, they will all say none, never, because they never did. Chris, you were a principal. How many times did you, did I tell you, go ahead and buy?
Zero.
Zero. Okay, how many, going back, I want to go back a little bit because I think we need to clarify certain things. Now that I'm up here, I kind of don't want to leave the mic, but I want to clarify a few things in regards to the purchasing department. We don't, there was a few words that were said, and let me go back, see if I can get my notes here. A few words that were said that. We got to be careful because it makes the the business office, it makes West School I S D, the business office, the purchasing department look pretty bad. Okay, and that's not the case. Some of the words have been used. There's, we funneled certain things. We facilitated purchases to certain vendors. Magic numbers, okay, not true. We don't facilitate purchases. Purchasing department, business office does not facilitate purchases to any one vendor. Never have, never will. I was talking to Chris, we had that meeting, I'm sorry, Doctor Valdez. And she says, I don't have any friends. I said, well, welcome to the club. I don't have friends. I don't. I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't. You can ask whoever you want. I don't go to lunch. I don't go to games. I don't go to T ball games, football game, nowhere. Because that's, that's just not the way to do business. Okay? So when we use those words, we got to be careful because it really, we have a lot of good people that work under me, that work under Andres in the whole district. And that makes W I S D look like we're doing illegal stuff and we're not. I wasn't supposed to, I was not supposed to use that word because those are, those are bad words when you talk about purchasing. We don't facilitate, we don't create numbers, we don't fabricate things. We don't funnel business to anyone. We just don't do it. Period. And that's what I wanted to say in that regard because I want to make that clear. If anybody has any questions regarding the purchasing, by all means, shoot away.
I, I mean, I, because I use those words.
Yes, you did.
So there is obviously, the process is broken. If you don't want to recognize those words or not. We do have problems in our district and the process is broken. Because if we're sitting here using, we're sitting here throwing. If we're sitting here spending five, six, seven hundred thousand dollars a year with one company. When there's five listed, what else, what else are we going to call that?
I agree with you, Mr. There, you know, the process is broken.
Yes.
The the overall process is broken. But what I am saying is not that we're perfect and the process does needs fixing. That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is we got to be careful how we address that. That's all I'm saying. Because I agree and the report shows it and anybody who reads the report, I heard it.
Yes.
Hey, what's wrong with purchasing? What's wrong with the business office? What are they doing over there? Basically, they're saying in a nutshell, hey, you guys are sending money or facilitating the purchase. To that vendor. We facilitate, we facilitated the purchase, but we didn't facilitate the purchase to any one vendor.
Correct.
That, that's what I want to make clear.
Yes.
Because and as far as is a process broken somewhat. And there's a lot of factors for that, starting from the top all the way down. I shared that with Doctor Valdez.
Yes.
And all we ask, all I ask is if you're, if we're going to fix it, it's got to stop, start with you guys, bottom line.
Yes, sir.
And we follow, we're the foot soldiers.
Yes.
But if we don't have your authority and your backing. Five years from now, we're going to sit here, we're going to be reading the same thing.
But and you bring up some great points, sir. My thing is accountability. Who is accountable for all of this? This is, and I know you guys work hard, everybody else under that department may work hard or something, but it is what it is.
It is what it is, you're right.
People accountable when we're not going to acknowledge what was happening.
And that's part of the problem. That's part of the broken system that we have. And I shared, or I was talking to Doctor Valdez and I said, look. If we, I'm the purchasing director and I can, and I do certain, we can do certain things to make the the system work. But I reached a point where you have to give me the authority. You have to give us the authority if a particular vendor, if we see something is going on or we feel or we have a. Documentation numbers, then we should have the authority to stop that. Temporarily stop it until we investigate it. And if you give us me the authority or give us the authority. And it's not about getting a power trip here, it's just give us the authority to. When we see a red flag, I know you were saying about red flags, absolutely right. We see the red flag, give us the authority, we'll stop it because we see it.
But see, and my, my advantage, I worked for the district. And many times I know, I know Mr. Sanchez did stop it. Hey. We can't get this purchase, we're going to get this quote, whatever it was. So I experienced that, boom, we can't get that, what he did, what stopped it? So I experienced that. So why did we stop it here and not here? That's mine.
And we have stopped certain things in in many instances. These two cases, one of them in particular, the awards and incentives. I told Doctor Casner or I mean, Mr. Casner this when in one of my various conversations with him, when he's questioning me. I said, look, if you give me a hundred dollars, I'm going to spend a hundred dollars. Give me a thousand dollars, I'm going to spend a thousand dollars. Nobody wants to say this, but if you want to control the spending on awards incentive, you could have to cut the budget, period. And I'm on record now and and people are going to dislike me, but that's okay. People dislike me already. So we're good.
It's okay, Mr. Garcia, I proposed it already to Mr. Sanchez.
I know, I know you have, and that's something that needs to be looked at in a very concrete, serious manner. Because if not, you give a million dollars, they're going to spend a million dollars and it's going to be on. And one of the good things is going to be is is the million dollars are being spent in the right, for the right reasons. But the point is you're still spending a million dollars. And if you want to cut it, forget about what vendor is getting all the business. I think we made a huge investment into into that. The key is we spent a million dollars regardless of who gets the the sale, the business, it's a million dollars.
Sure.
And I agree with all you guys, it's a lot of money. We could have put it somewhere else. Now, again, I'm not saying don't give the principals money for the award incentive. I know you were a principal, you know exactly, there's value in that.
Yes.
There's a lot of value in that, but there's also a certain point where it starts to diminish, the value diminishes. And that's the balance that we have to to get at. And Casner was asking, well, you know, why, why, why? Well, wait a minute, if you give them a million dollars, you budget a million dollars and. Principals are going to use it for their staff and their and their students. That's what they did. But we don't facilitate, at least we didn't facilitate, and I speak for me and for my staff, we didn't facilitate. The purchase to any one vendor. That, that never happened. As a matter of fact, if anybody questioned the principals, it was me. I question them all the time. You can ask them. You have emails that prove that I did that and they responded. And that's what's not written in the report. The report is full of things that, because we paid them to go and find. Dirt, basically, okay? But the report, they didn't spend any time in telling you guys all the good stuff we did. The stuff, that was in the scope of work. But that's okay. But if you read it at face value, it looks like we didn't do anything except sit back and. And I closed my eyes, as Mike de la Rosa says, I closed my eyes and hit the button to approve. Which is, that's a joke because that that doesn't happen. Oh, yeah, he says no, that I always hit the button, no.
But there is a positive.
I look at every requisition, every single requisition that comes to my office, I look at it and I look at the backup.
Somebody had a question, yes, sir. I'm sorry. First, I want to make more of a statement than question. And first I want to say thank you for coming up to the podium and being honest.
You're welcome.
And telling us your side, you, you. You brought, you said something that that really hits home where you said that it all starts at the very top and you pointed toward the board. That's exactly the case. I understand, I've worked in the district, you know, for many years. We haven't had these issues, but you know, I understand that it happens in other districts. You know, speaking to your colleagues from other districts, things like that, you get to learn things and know how, the culture and the climate is at every single different district. I know you have colleagues in other districts as well. You know, you communicate and you talk and you learn things.
Yes, you do.
And there's sometimes, like you said, it starts at the very top. Sometimes there's external forces or situations. That cause these type of things in the report. And you're right, it does start at the very top. Given the authority and empowering superintendent and not restraining her. And allowing her to do her job, his or her, or whatever the case may be, you know, that'll come in future. And then her allow, her or him allowing their staff to follow policy guidelines and controls and enforce them without getting a phone call from a board member that why aren't you doing this? Why aren't you doing that? That empowers you then to to fully fulfill your job and your duties. So I understand that and I just want to say that I am very happy that you got up to the podium and you said what you had to say. And brought out the light and the facts on your end as well to know what the situation was and where it all starts. Accountability starts here first with the team of eight. And that's something that also leads to issues later on that we saw in this report. So that's all I wanted to say, just to say.
Thank you. And to add to that, I'm not putting blame or shifting blame.
Right.
At all, because I'll take responsibility. I mean, we got hammered, the newspaper is hammering us every other day, it seems. And the business office, the purchase department especially specifically is getting hammered. And that's okay. People that know me and and people that know how I work, they know, they know that's not true, not all of it. I mean, it is what it is, like Mr. Venus has, yes, it's true. We should, we should have never gotten to this point. We never should have gotten to this point. We should have stopped it or figured out a way to to mitigate it. And unfortunately, we are here. And I hate to keep using this word, but the only, unless there's a time machine that can go backwards, we can't. We can only go forward.
Right. And that's what I wanted since you came up the very beginning to go back to the beginning again, the reason why we asked you about the trainings. And I asked you, is it optional, mandatory? Being educated as of what is right as the, you know, the business office employees, I think is so important because. Yes, even us as the board, we need to be educated on what we're voting on. Sometimes you might come in here and not even know what's in the agenda or did we really study and prepare to see what we're voting on? Did we really research what we're looking into and deciding? I know that sometimes you don't have that much time, you know, but as a board, we need to spend time. And really know what we're voting on and research it and look at what you're doing. And same thing with the staff, your business staff. I think it's a great idea and you have my full support if if it can be done a mandatory, like you said. Training so that they know exactly what to do because it's benefit.
Not only, and I appreciate those words, but not only is it the mandatory of training a really good tool. But if we record it, the words can't be twisted. But you said this, you were, you said we could do this when you didn't say that. But now that we have it recorded, hey, go back to the video, it's right there.
Yes.
So I think we're going to continue doing it now. We just need, we've been in, I've been in communications or train or meetings with my staff. To come up with those topics that that we're going to focus on first. And I don't have the list with you, but once we put it together, I'll share it, Doctor Valdez, so she can share with you guys.
Appreciate you coming up here.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Valdez. Okay, the last one is very short one. The nice recommendation they have is recommended the district consider implementing an anonymous reporting hotline to assist the district with the identification of improper activity. Including fraud, waste and abuse. So administration will be evaluating this recommendation for input to the board in the near future. We don't have anything ready right now for that. And we'll be looking into that.
We are considering adding that hotline specifically for fraud, waste and abuse on the business.
I'd just like to end by saying that we will work to earn your trust.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item six, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of a budget amendment for the purchase, purchase of two hundred new band uniforms. For the West School East High School band. Doctor Valdez.
Board of trustees are a wildcat regiment from West School East High School. They're in need of new band uniforms. We do have Mr. Andres Sanchez here, Mr. Christopher Fernandez. We do have to transfer money. Mr. Sanchez.
Yes.
And then also the clarification on two hundred uniforms or two hundred and fifty.
Yes, I sent you an email earlier.
Yeah, the agenda that we presented was given to me earlier in the year. We came, we came to the board on July sixth and we discussed it that we were looking at it. And it was two hundred uniform that we had. I got the quotes and we said, we're going to take, bring out amendment for fund balance in July. We missed it and in August we forgot it with many things going on and we didn't put it in what we need to bring it up because we had discussed it with the board. We had told the department that we wanted to bring it to you.
And there's a quote there, Mr. Sanchez, for two hundred and fifty.
Yes.
And Mr. Fernandez is, Mr. Cuero, yes. Are you in need of two hundred or two fifty, sir?
The reason I'm asking for two fifty, it's not just to have an abundance of it, it's just to make sure that we have enough sizes. Also allocated for six drum majors in the past four years or even previous. Our drum majors will go out and purchase their own uniforms because we didn't have enough sizes. We do have some gentlemen wearing female uniforms because we don't have enough sizes. I mean, we could tell who it is, but we don't tell them because there's certain. And then we also have females that wear in guy sizes that certain areas don't fit them, but it's just because we don't have enough. We have currently in our inventory two fifty. I think at one point it was two eighty, two seventy five, but it dwindled down to two fifty. We've been maintaining it for the last four or five years, you know, two fifty. But there are some of them that are just, we don't use because they're torn. So that's why I suggested, you know, two fifty, at least two fifty. Because at the beginning, before pandemic, we were originally supposed to have two hundred and nine students. We started with thirty three in June, sorry, yeah, in June, and then we grew to a hundred and thirty. So we're hoping with the new band hall with with everything, we're going to keep on going. So that's why I'm recommending possibly two hundred and fifty. So we won't come back and a year later, A, I need more and it's going to delay us even more for those kids. Because right now, if I get a kid that looks like me, I don't have anything. I really don't, you know.
Mr. Cuero, a quick question. I know when Mr. Bissa was here before he retired, there was like a rotation like when y'all got them, because I know they're really. Specialized type uniforms. I don't remember if it was every ten years.
Every ten years.
Every ten years.
Every ten years, yes.
So what year are we on now?
This tenth.
Ten. And then I know they also presented the design, they brought it to the board. And then I, I know they also presented the design, they brought it to the board for them to, to take.
We actually have the finalized product here. We would like to display it so that you understand what it is that we're trying to fix up here. There is a 180 day turnover time. So the reason why we're trying to make this move is so that
Would it be here before?
Ready to go for the 21, 22 school year.
That is nice.
That's nice. We are going to change this purple right here. We're going to go to black. You know, I know our, our school colors, but that was the recommendation with Mr. Dr. Gomboa. And we, you know, I've been, it's been four years. I've been little by little designing it and this is the final outcome. But we will change this to black. We will take off this gray, but basically this is what we came out.
Very modern, yeah. Black or white?
Great design.
We will go black because if we go white, it's gonna.
You can see it.
You can see it and it's going to tear it. And then certain instruments, we rub against it. So it's going to, it's going to discern, that's why.
It's a beautiful design.
Yes, thank you.
Very nice. Comes with a hat as well as a plume, right?
Hat with the plume. We also, we also have a wrap that is going to go on the hat. If I could get it out, thank you.
Yes, sir.
This is also going to be wrapped around our hat. So it, it, we have multiple this and then this, this thing will come off. So we will be able to have like different designs and not always wear the, the full uniform.
And, and we could kind of rotate, have, have many, many options.
I move to approve.
Let me just clarify, the amendment that you have is for 117,000. The amount needed is 146,607. That will be the amendment, the correct amount.
Cause it, because of the additional 50, right? I'll change my motion. I amend my motion to, to increase it to the 250.
Right.
So I've got a, I've got a motion by Mr. Gonzalez to approve the amendment for the purchase of 250 new band uniforms. And then I've got a second by Mr. De Los Santos. Any further discussion?
I would just, Mr. Cuero, is there any way to, to, I, I, I know the sizes because we used to run into that as well, you know, you order, you're pre-ordering ahead of time and there's, you know, you don't know what.
Well, we do it, the sizes, we, we measure the current sizes.
Yes.
Because of COVID, a lot of the kids and myself, we came back with the COVID-19 weight. But because we, you know, we've been working since July, actually since June, and we lost a lot of weight. So some kids that really lost some weight, we're like, okay, we got to find another one, but we're okay. But we can't hem it. So we, we use current sizes and then if it's possible, but because COVID, we, we can use the eighth, eighth graders. We could size them, but they're going to grow. I used to have a freshman sophomore that was like this tall. He came, he came up and he was like 6'2", 6'3", but I recognized his voice, you know, it's like, what happened? I don't have a size for you. So.
Mr. Cuero, when will these be ready till next year? They'll be ready for, for next year?
Yes, it'll be 180 days whenever we process. So we'll have it available for next year.
Okay.
I would just like to see, Mr. Cuero, even, even if, even if we had to come, but yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be effective, I guess, for you, it wouldn't work out. Even if you had to wait and then order more next year, I know we only order every 10 years, but to get better sizes for the kids so that they're not out there. And I'm sure they're, do they get tailored to fit the students?
No, no, because we can't, it, it's hard for us to be so cut because then we start breaking down the fibers of the cloth and then they'll rip.
Well, they look sharp from up on the field, I guess, and we can't even tell that, you know, that they're wearing it larger than they're supposed to, whatever. But okay.
You could, we'll go ahead and take it to a vote. Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Mrs. Sustita?
Aye.
Mr. Trevino?
Aye.
Mr. De Los Santos?
Aye.
And Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Uh, let's see, item number seven, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of substantial completion for the bus drive and teacher parking lot repaving project at Wesaco High School. CSP number 21 dash 12 dash 18.
Yes. The, the scope of work consisted of replacing, consisted of replacing the concrete bus drive and teacher parking lot at Wesco High School. And we have Mr. Medico Garza here. Should you have any questions? We're recommending approval.
Mr. Garza, is it flowing correctly? Cause I drove over here the other day to drop off my son and it looked like in the same areas where water would, would stay. So I just want to make sure that it's graded correctly, that it's going to flow out.
The grading is correct, but we do have issues right now. It's with the plenary of the actual parking lot, the asphalt. And so what that is, is that we're thinking that it may have been an issue with the, with the paver where they set it to do a crowning type of effect. So you have some sort of ridges, if you will, if you're driving through there, you'll feel it on your vehicle. So we've already brought that up to the contractor. It's on the punch list. So whichever way they have to address it, even if it means redoing the, that asphalt, tearing it up and, and relaying it out. But they're, they're tasked to fix it, yes.
Okay. But the grading itself. Concern about approving it. When you drive it, you, you feel it.
So this is just substantial completion for us to, to be able to cut off the actual contractual time. And, and from there start counting whether the delay days that they're requesting for rain will surpass the contractual time and then liquidated damages and so forth. But the final completion is not going to be approved until we're, we're ready.
Okay.
It doesn't have to do with the weight of the big heavy machinery on there, is it? That it's kind of sinking? Because I know with our heavy machinery, this, our street, you know, it starts getting the bumps in there. Are there heavy machinery on there right now?
Uh, no, not right now, but this happened even before we started using it. So there was a delay in using the parking lot, Mrs. Sustita, because the last pour of concrete that they did was what's called the apron right at the entrance of the drive from border. And so we had to wait that, they did that right before school started. We had to wait, the 28 days for it to dry properly to specs, or at least close to specifications before we could get any weight on that. We were afraid that we were going to break it. And then finally we got close enough, 28 days and we said, you know what? That's it. We can't go anymore. And it's, and if anything happens and they, they weren't right at the spec, the, the strength of the concrete was specified at 4,000 PSI. They got to 3,100. Uh, and so at that point, we're saying if anything happened, we have to use it. If anything happens on the contractor, because the spec called for 28 days for them to meet the 4,000.
The buses are already getting on there then, right? Cause the buses are heavy and they're getting on there.
Yes. And so the recommendation from the test company, that materials testing company, which is an engineering firm that, that we got was 3,500 PSI. So we're pretty close. The, the engineer went above and beyond to, to 4,000. Yes. Right. And so at this point, we're, we're using it. It's substantial completion. We're not going to approve it final or bring it to you for final approval until we're satisfied.
We'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve based on Mr. Garza's recommendation.
I'll second.
I have, for item seven, I have a motion by Mr. Gonzalez and a second by Mr. De Los Santos. Any further discussion?
I would just like to see those areas repaired before we pay out the final, the final.
Absolutely. Yes. We'll take it to a vote. Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Mrs. Sustita?
Aye.
Mr. Trevino?
Aye.
Mr. De Los Santos?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Motion pass.
Thank you.
Thank you, Medico. Item, any discussion, possible action for the board to consider the selection of one or more architect firms for future district projects, RFQ number 21 dash 06 dash 32. Dr. Valdez?
Recommendation is that the board consider the selection of one or more architect firms for future district projects that require these services. We did host a board workshop where we had nine architect firms present. And so I call on Mr. Sanchez. And so should the board be inclined to rank the firms? As part of the selection, you can use the criteria points listed on page two. Mr. Sanchez will guide you through the process should you proceed in that direction.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Valdez. On the agenda, item that we have is for the architects. You all listened to the presentation from the nine firms. And we had mentioned, if you'd like to rank according to the criteria, I'll give you another ranking sheet, or you want to rank them like we do with the engineers.
Mr. Sanchez, I see the valuation criteria says, one of them, actually the one that has the most points, 35 points is references. Favorable and unfavorable references from school districts. Well, I don't know, they all sounded great to me. And back here, they all say, do they have references? Yes, 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 yes. Everybody has references. But I don't, I can't see who's are more favorable, who's are less. I would like to have more information because the presentations were all awesome. I just don't, I, I don't really have much more information. And references are really, it's 35 points. 35. Could we get references before we pick somebody?
Yeah, yeah, we can.
Like, you know, did you, did you guys call and hey, this is, I don't know how you.
No, we didn't, we didn't call. They provided letters on the proposals.
Okay.
We get, we get copies of that.
That would help me. I don't know about you guys. I don't know.
You want to submit a motion or?
You want to submit a motion to table this?
Unless you guys have somebody else in mind, but I would like more information. Is, are we in a hurry for a project?
There is one project that we would like to get started with. Remember, we came back with another recommendation that you all voted down. We need to do the access control project at all four middle schools. We have a grant from TA for 270,000. Now, we, the, the deadline was May 31, 2021. You know, Mr. de la Rosa asked for an extension and they gave us till May 31 of 2022. So we have eight months to go, eight months to go to finish it. So we need to have the architect draw the plans. They have to hire a consultant that addresses that type of systems and go out for proposals, approve them, get the contract, get going and have it done before May 31. So that is the one project that we have urgent. The other one is prepared for the warehouse office damage with the flood. We'd like to do some repair there and do a different layout if possible. So we'll need an architect for that project as well. Those are the two projects that we have right now. And the next one will be roofing. Other project, whenever we do more roofs.
Cause the evaluation criteria, experience, well, we can obviously see their experience. That's worth 30 points. Team personnel qualifications and experience with the firm, well, we can see that also. But the one that, that is worth the most is the one that I don't, I can't see.
That one's divided up, that one's divided up in references and timeline.
Yeah, well, that's why those two, you know, they're going to tell you, yes, they finished on time and yes, they did greater. And they, I don't know.
We can table it and then ask them to provide more information that you'll need, or we can select some of them.
Andres, whatever action is taken though, but mine is, is complete, just so you can already have.
I would, I just, I would like to see if we can proceed. I know Jackie's got a concern with the references, but I know that some of these companies drove a long ways.
Right.
They've been here all evening with us. And if we could just make a decision, you know, pick, you know, pick two companies. I think we can pick two companies and then that way you rotate. So I make a motion, I make a motion to select two companies.
Two or three.
Based off rankings?
Based off rankings. Let's go three companies. I make a motion, accept three companies.
Okay.
You want to mention which ones?
The ranking according to.
We're going to be ranking. Yeah, can you give us a few minutes? We'll give you a few minutes just to kind of.
Can I have a new one, Mr. Nieto? I have three wrote on mine. I wrote all over mine. Cause I was seeing him. Thank you.
But for the future, Mr. Sanchez, if we could get some references.
Yeah.
When, when. I, I think that'll help us.
Okay.
Change it up. All right, like what is the criteria for this?
Do you need to the math for it?
Mm-hmm.
What are we winning on? One more rankings? We're winning. Oh, Andres is making the rankings right now. Just telling him that the rankings are. Oh, very good presentations. Did a great job.
Would you like to go to the next item or we do the calculations?
Absolutely.
Just put it on, on hold or whatever you want to call it.
So we'll, we'll come back to item number eight. So let's move on to item nine. Discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of a resolution of, of the board regarding a local remote, remote learning program for the 2021, 2022 school year. Dr. Valdez?
Yes, so we are offering a virtual learning academy. Pursuant to education code 25.9091C, a district offering a local remote learning program may provide a virtual course through remote synchronous instruction, asynchronous instruction or. through remote synchronous instruction, asynchronous instruction, or a combination. And proposed amendments to the student attendance handbook provide that a board approved local policy determines which instructional methods and attendance-taking methods the district will use. So we're gonna use a combination of, of remote synchronous and asynchronous. And with the daily attendance for synchronous instruction taken at ten AM. And so administration recommends, uh, approval of the resolution regarding local remote learning for this academic school year.
So move to approve?
Second.
At a motion by Mr. Nieto and a second by Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
To approve item nine, any further discussion on that?
Just to clarify, this is the, SB, uh-
Senate Bill fifteen.
Fifteen, this is the ten percent. Okay, yes, okay.
We'll go ahead and take it to a vote. Uh, Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Mrs. Sustaita?
Aye.
Mr. Trevino?
Aye.
Mr. De Los Santos?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Motion, motion passes. Mr. Sanchez, Mr. Sanchez, you still need more time?
Yes.
Okay. We'll go ahead and go on to item ten, discussion and on policy BEC legal. Dr. Valdez?
Yes, um, we have Dr. Sergio Garcia here, he's going to, we have copies of policy BEC legal. And we did have a trustee, um, request to put the item on the agenda. And BEC legal is for board meetings, particularly with closed meetings.
May I speak?
Yes, Mrs. Sustaita.
I don't know if I could or not. The reason why I asked for this to be on our agenda for closed meetings is because I read-
Okay.
I read, uh, on here, for closed meetings, instead of having a certified agenda, we can actually have a recording on, in our closed session, and if you look, I believe it's on the last page, on page, is it page four, four? Or, no, I'm sorry, page three of four. At the very bottom, our policy says certified agenda or recording in closed session. And it says a board shall either keep a certified agenda or make a recording of the proceedings of each closed meeting. Except for private consultation with the district's attorney. And the reason why is because you know how sometimes we wanna go back and, well, this is what this person said, or no, or it was sometime, like in the audit, I think part of it, I'll let me go reference the audit. Some, uh, actions weren't written down, so they were questionable. So with a recording, everything we say, everything we do is there, it gets stored away. It, no one can listen to it unless it says here, uh, like a litigation or, uh, a court order, then somebody can get it. But we, we avoid having to have a written certified agenda. Uh, we can just have this recording. And so I just thought that was better for us to just have on, on file.
Yeah, and just to, you know, I, I support that initiative when it was brought up, because we're trying to, we're trying to push for as much transparency as possible. I know that the administration also said that anytime, I don't know if that's gonna be policy, or that's just gonna be something that we practice, but there's also gonna be in addition to, not only a recording is a great idea, but that anytime that there's an employee that is denied by the board, then we'll each have to fill out a written, written document stating why, and then that could be on file and be noted.
So the transparency is there, the accountability, we're starting with something here to say, this is what we're going to do.
And I think it'll be good, you know, I know when we go into closed session, we still have to follow the agenda, and that'll also help us stay on task and, uh, and not go away from the agenda in closed session, right, Mr.?
Mr. Pulle, uh, I know what, what we just read, but going along with Marcos just said, as far as like a signed document, is there something that needs to be stated here, or is that just a practice that we can adopt?
I know we talked about it, is that just practice or we're picking a policy?
Now, is this an action item, or is this just to go ahead and proceed with the, with the policy change?
Yeah, no, I don't think there's an action, it's already there. It's just, let's just discuss it, and let's see, we wanted to that instead of having the written certified agenda for our next meeting or whenever we wanna be ready.
Is it, is it? Look at it from a, like-
No, I don't think we need an action, do we?
No?
No?
It's just discussion, so everyone's all, everyone's in agreement with that. All right.
Any, any further discussion on that? All right, we'll give Mr. Sanchez a few more minutes. Item eleven, discussion and consideration of policy amendments and amendments to the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two employee and student handbook with regard to dress code to address health issues regarding the public health pandemic. Dr. Valdez? Okay. Okay. Well, I'll make a motion to modify the agenda and go to executive session. Can we, can we see if Mr. Sanchez is ready before we go in, that way the architect, architects can go and do, but do we need the motion to modify, or no? Because we're skipping-
Yes, we'll, we'll need the motion to modify.
Oh, yes.
I'll do it after he does the numbers.
Yeah, let's hit it. You want him to go and do it?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make a motion to modify the agenda and go into closed session to discuss item number nine and the agenda for closed session.
We need a, we need a second on that? Second?
Item eleven.
Second.
Okay. So for item eleven, we're gonna, we're gonna change the order of the agenda, go into closed session first, and then we'll come back and address item eleven, and I have a motion by Mr. De Los Santos and a second by Mr. Nieto.
Correct.
Any discussion on that? We'll take it to a vote. Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Mrs. Sustaita?
Aye.
Mr. Trevino?
Aye.
Mr. De Los Santos?
Aye.
And Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Motion passes. And what position? Wait, should we? He's done, he's done already?
Yeah. Yeah, they can leave.
But even though we went to close, can we, can we? Hold on, let's see. We're approved, we just made for the rankings. Yes, well, we actually, we have to go through the processing, the process, the motion, I think Jessica maybe thought it was-
We're gonna go back to, we're gonna rescind. The very good discussion.
I didn't bring much-
The very good discussion, now they're gonna take action on this item.
Do we wait on, on the architect? We already made the motion to go to the back?
To go to closed session, we made the motion to go to closed session and modify the agenda. So, so we can't, we can't take a vote on this yet, because we have to come back. Do they wanna take action to let the architects go? I'm gonna rescind my motion.
Yes, sir. Morning. Morning. Doris, how to rescind the motion to go into executive session and modify the agenda?
And then we'll take care of that, and then we can then we'll go back. Okay, I'm, I'm ma, I'm making a motion to rescind my last motion of modifying the agenda and going to closed session.
Okay.
And, and, and for us to go back to the normal-
To the regular, okay, agenda.
Yeah. To address.
Second. So we got the motion by Mr. De Los Santos and a second by Mr. Nieto to return to the regular agenda? And any further discussion on that? Okay, we'll take it to a vote. Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Mrs. Sustaita?
Aye.
Mr. Trevino?
Aye.
Mr. De Los Santos?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Motion passes, so we'll go on, we'll go back to item number eight. And, uh, I'll entertain the motion, how do we? I have the results, but we need to entertain what we're gonna do, correct?
Well, there was a motion to approve the rankings.
The top three. Right, by Mr. Trevino.
Correct.
Okay, and do we have a second on that?
Second?
By Mrs. Sustaita?
Okay.
So we have, uh, for item eight, we have a motion to approve the top three ranked architect firms. Uh, motion was by Mr. Trevino, second by Mrs. Sustaita. Do I need to say the names at this, or let's take it, we'll take it to a vote first, right?
No, you say the names.
We'll say the names, okay, so number one, number one ranked was Ginec. Number two was Warren Group, and number three was Amtech. So we got any further discussion on that? So we'll take it to a vote. Uh, Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Mrs. Sustaita?
Aye.
Mr. Trevino?
Aye.
Mr. De Los Santos?
Aye.
And Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Motion passes.
We have the points, but we got the three ranked companies.
Now you can change the order, right?
So now I make a motion to change the order of the agenda and go into pri, into, into the closed meeting to discuss item eleven and the rest of the closed meeting agenda.
Check, check.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Nieto.
So I got the motion to change the order of the agenda by Mr. De Los Santos and a second by Mr. Gonzalez. Any discussion? And we'll take it to a vote. Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Mrs. Sustaita?
Aye.
Mr. Trevino?
Aye.
Mr. De Los Santos?
Aye.
And Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item twelve, closed meeting to discuss. Okay, put, number, um, number twelve, closed meeting to discuss a personnel matters, Texas Government Code five five one dot zero seven four, employment of personnel, certified professional and non-contractual personnel to resignations. Number three, deliberation regarding the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, Texas Government Code five five one dot zero seven four and five five one dot zero seven one. Uh, B, twelve B is consultation with attorney regarding a pending or contemplated litigation, B, a settlement offer, or C, a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the Wesaco ISD under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state bar of Texas clearly conflicts with chapter five fifty-one of the Texas Government Code, Texas Government Code five five one dot zero seven one. And it is now ten oh six, and we'll go into closed session. Okay, now, it is now ten fifty-two. And we'll move on, we're gonna return back to item eleven. Which was discussion, consideration of policy amendments and amendments to the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two employee and student handbook with regard to dress code to address health issues regarding the public health pandemic. Dr. Valdez?
Yes, recommend, administration recommends no action.
No action. All right, we'll move on to item twelve, I'm sorry, thirteen. A, possible action, if necessary, on items disclosed, discussed in closed meeting. Number one, discussion and possible action on new employment, certified professional and non-contractual personnel.
Recommendation is, uh, for, uh, employment of personnel, certified professional, non-contractual personnel as discussed in closed session.
Oh, yes, I will abstain from the voting of substitutes.
Substitution, let's, let's. So I had a motion by Mr. Gonzalez, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nieto? And do we have a discussion on that? We'll take it to a vote. Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Mrs. Sustaita?
Aye.
Mr. Trevino?
Aye.
Mr. De Los Santos?
Mr. Gonzalez? Aye.
Motion passes. Item two, discussion and possible, possible action on resignations. Dr. Valdez?
Recommendation is to accept the resignation as presented in closed session.
Come on.
I have a motion by Mr. Gonzalez?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nieto, any discussion? And we'll take it to a vote. Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Mrs. Sustaita?
Aye.
Mr. Trevino?
Aye.
Mr. De Los Santos?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item fourteen, adjournment?
Come on.
And it is now ten fifty-four.